So either one of you choose, but one of the first so we can hear what the towns and try to estimate this today.
You can go first and then I can kind of leave.
So we met with the selectmen in November. We had asked for a basically a level budget with contractual increases required. We asked everyone to give us what they thought their departments needed separately. So try to have two different budgets and see where everything came in. So that was a nice attempt to see what was going on. We got the numbers in for the budgets second week in January. We met first the finance committee. We saw that special ed and the elementary school, the increase is about $400,000. We know that Prop 2.5 is $390,000. We're estimating $106,000 for new growth. We have $601,000 in excess capacity. The agreement for the excess capacity is that we're going to fund the fire suppression system here in the school and Pope's Tavern inside the levy. So that's about $300,000. We know that a 2% raise is about $100,000 across the town. So when we looked at the numbers, we're getting very worried that we have a $400,000 increase here with the budget that's presented at Silver Lake. It's approximately $300,000. And we have $300,000 for the Pope's Tavern. And $100,000 for the 2%. And with those lines, all that money that I just said we ask for added revenue, that's out the window with just those lines. So that's where we stand right now. Silver Lake's having their meeting Thursday night where they'll talk about their budget. And the finance committee is pretty much at a standstill until we get a number from Silver Lake. So we can't really comment right now on what we think the departments need to do from a budget standpoint until we get that last number filled in. So my number is rough, $300,000 because it was a million dollars on the first budget proposal and we have 32% of that number. So that's where we stand right now. We don't have the other increases and any other lines able to be handled at this point.
So when we talk about excess of levy, I don't know if anybody understands what that is. And so I'll just give you a brief overview. Okay. So the state gives the towns and cities a 2.5% cap that we can go up every year. So over the last six or seven years, we haven't gone to the cap because we've been listening to the taxpayers talk about the burden of their tax bill. And so we've been trying to keep spending low because we recognize that most of our taxes, revenues come from the residents because we have a lack of commercial base and we all know why and I won't get into that. And so we've kind of set that aside, you know, as excess, not only to help the taxpayers, but also to have that available if something happens. As you all know, we do tend to get these large increases with special education, not quite as large as this year, but you know, we do try to cover them and we've been successful for the last 15 years covering any kind of increase so that the regular day program has not had to suffer as a result of sped going up. So when we talk about excess levy, you know, we have a lot on the table. So if you look at the budgets that were brought in by the departments and 99% of them are level serviced or level funded, even our fire department level funded this year, so that was helpful. And we talk about the payments that we've committed to the taxpayers and the taxpayers have supported and that's the fire suppression system for this and Pope's renovation of the senior center. You know, based on the budgets that have been submitting, including your budget and Silver Lake's, which is not a level service budget, we would eat all of that excess, which would make a tax bill pretty significant increase for most of our taxpayers.
So we calculated it out to be about 8.75 to 9% and the average tax bill increase can be $482 to $500.
Is that including the debt? Okay. So those are pretty significant increases. But besides that, my concern is eating up all the excess levy and not having any sort of backup plan. So if next year we had another significant increase in sped, we wouldn't be able to make it up. As Gordon explained to you, our regular 2.5 this year was somewhere around $300,000. So if sped was at 400, there's nothing to do with anything else. The levy's gone. So we're not saying that the sky is falling, but we need you to be completely aware that this is a really tight year and if we can't get some of these budgets down and it's not, you know, at this point budgets have been so tight for other departments that there's not a lot of room, to be honest, there's not a lot of room. So unless we can get some kind of control, you know, we might have to take a look at level service and change that. And we don't want to have to, but it's a serious conversation that we all have to have. And I think that it's important, not only that the finance committee comes to your meetings, as you know, Gordon does make some of the meetings, but I also think as elected officials, it's important for you to know where your town stands and it's important for you to seek out that information from the finance committee or from the board of selectmen. It's not just a one-way street. It's your responsibility as elected officials to kind of know what the state of the union is. And so we're giving you that update now, but in the future, next year, I would love to see you guys come to finance committee meetings. That would be great. Thank you.
I guess maybe only me wondering either Kim or Gordon. It's going to be a situation, as Kim explained, that we are going to have to prioritize what we fund. If we have a limited number of dollars, we're going to build up or tear down whichever direction you want to talk about. So for instance, pay increases for the non-school employees. Obviously, if we have contracts and those contracts include step increases and those employees are still with us during fiscal '19, then we're going to require to have step increases. But for none of those contracts and also for wage and personnel employees, is there any requirement for a cross-board wage increase right now? We're just starting out the process of negotiating contracts with everybody. No one right now has a contractual obligation to get a general pay increase. We're not going to go that direction until we know we can fund that. And we're going to have to be working backwards on that in a sense of, we're not even worried about new programs or new personnel or additional hours or anything else until we know we can fund, for instance, the people we have. We won't be able to do a general wage increase until we know we can afford the step increases and work it backwards. We know some things we're obligated, one way or the other, retirement as an example, health insurance for those employees that we do have, veterans benefits is another example. Those things are, we know we've got to fund. But I suspect, and this includes school and non-school, Silver Lake, Caliphax Elementary, Fire Police Highway, Library, Town Hall, whoever. There may be a lot of unhappy campers come March and April because it may be simply the fiscal reality of the finance committee having to say, "We're not recommending." Now, ultimately, town meeting makes that decision. But even town meeting in the end, one way or the other, whether it's one town meeting or several town meetings, has to produce a balanced budget. And they all talked about the excess levy. Some of that, as we've already, has its obligation to making debt payments for the two projects we're mentioning. Some of that we've artificially kept away from the budget so that we can provide at least a little, not a heck of a lot in reality, but a little relief to our tax rate. Because if you're talking about $13 million in property taxes, $14 million in property taxes and only leaving $300,000 on the table to relieve, you can figure that out. It's only a couple of percentage points, maybe two, two and a half. So that's not a lot of relief. And as you mentioned, a significant increase in the tax rate is going to have some repercussions, some pushback at town meeting. This isn't mean that one budget is sent, you know, we pick on one budget to make everything work. It means, as we've talked about before, it's a lot of budgets. But I don't want you all to say, "Hey, wait a minute, nobody told us." Same thing that will happen in Silver Lake on Thursday, same thing when we start meeting with departments later this winter into early spring. I don't want anybody to be under the illusion that the budget that is voted tonight or budget that the fire chief presented to the finance committee earlier this winter, same thing with police or any other department, is going to be simply said yes to because we don't have the money right now to say yes to everything that everybody wants to do. Doesn't mean that we're going to say no to everything either. But we're in a situation that I don't want people to be surprised. That's where we are right now. I think we're going to be sharpening a lot of pencils. I think we're going to be looking at those revenue estimates a little bit more closely because if we're playing it that close, we also don't want to be overly optimistic. We're generally conservative for our local receipts. That has helped us as opposed to other communities nearby that have been overly optimistic about their local receipts. And they pay for that the next year because suddenly they've got a revenue deficit. Same thing with the state. I think the state A numbers that the House presented are probably what we're going to get. We got more, I believe, than the $20 per student, at least here. I'm not sure, so sure about Silver Lake, but here at Caliphax Elementary. So even if it goes up to 25 or 30 or some other number, unless it goes up dramatically, what we've got is what we've got. Same thing with the general unrestricted local aid. That's a percentage increase, that's everybody, and it's based on what the state's getting in. I don't see anything changing. And those are the two numbers really that matter in the state A bucket. So the finance committee had a lot of work to do. You know, you folks do, also Silver Lake does. I just don't want people to be shocked at what comes up in terms of recommendations from the finance committee.
We had a couple of updates to share with the budget. One of them is good, potentially. The other ones, maybe not as much financially. So when we built the budget, we built it in with circuit breaker at 55%, which is always where we start. If we move it up to 60%, that would lower our special ed cost by $26,551. We could go up to 65%. I have to admit, it makes me a little bit nervous. I'm more comfortable staying at 60%. I think Kim agreed with me.
Yeah, I don't want you, yeah.
I really appreciate that. So, you know, we could at least lower our special education cost by $26,551. That would go to 60% reimbursement. We have had a teacher apply for their sick leave buyback, which is $24,600, which has to be added to the budget. We have also had two teachers apply for longevity, which is $3,000 each. So that's an extra $6,000. So within the personnel line item, that would be an increase of $30,600. So that is obviously not good news. We also have had a student apply for out-of-district vocational. You may remember they have until April 1st. Traditionally, what we have done is when we have someone apply, we put the money in in case they get accepted. We never know if they will. We also anticipate that probably more than one person will apply. We don't know that. The money that is in the budget, there is a body, an actual child, because of each of those numbers. There is no additional money currently for out-of-district vocational. So that would be an increase of potentially $35,000. They've applied for an agricultural school, which if they were to get into, would be a substantial transportation cost. But there's one piece of good news in there in case you missed it, it's at the very beginning.
You know, and all those things you can't do anything about.
Absolutely, we can't. And I don't know where to go with it. You know, I don't know if, I absolutely understand what you're saying. I don't know if there's information that you can give us, like something you're interested in us working towards and we can see what it would mean to get there. You know, I realize that, you know, I've just added a bit of money to it. Again, I can't control any of those things, sort of contractual obligations. Christine, did I miss anything?
Joy, is that reflected in the newest numbers that you just passed?
No, this is the old budget. We haven't done a version two of the budget.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have not done a version two, so.
I mean, I don't want to speak for Gordon, but I think at this point it's a little early. I don't think we have a number for you to reach. I think the purpose of this conversation is to say, we may come to you and it may be a lot lower than what you've submitted. And we hope we don't have to go there. Like, I don't want to be Chicken Little, "The sky is falling." But it's not a good situation right now at all. It's the beginning of the budget season and we always sort of have a deficit. But this is a little larger than it normally is and then it just got a little larger in the last three minutes than it normally is. So it's not great news, but, I mean, these are the cards that were dialed and we just need you to be cooperative and understanding that if we have to come to you, that you understand where we're coming from.
And I assume you still want us to vote the budget at our next school committee meeting, March 5th? March 1st are the dates?
I think that's going to be too early.
I don't, I don't know if you vote that, that we'll be able to make a recommendation on a number by March.
So you're okay to wait till April?
I think so.
But that's before 45 days.
You're going to take the 45 days from town meeting to when we vote our budget?
Well, I mean, you might have to have a special meeting because I'm not sure that the finance committee will be ready on March 5th.
Okay.
But I think that, you know, because we don't want to put this huge number in there or this small number in there if we don't have to. So let's work on it. You know, Thursday is another meeting with another big, large budget that, you know, is going to probably swing this number because I forgot to mention that when we do the spreadsheet on the town budget, what we have in there, which I know is not going to happen because we didn't have the Silver Lake assessment number. So Sandy, the accountant, just had plugged in a level funded assessment, which I know is not going to happen. So our deficit is a deficit without even including any increase at Silver Lake. So that's why this is, yeah, not great.
Will you guys be discussing the Silver Lake budget situation at your next finance committee meeting on Monday?
I'm sure we will because we'll have had the Silver Lake meeting on Thursday, so. I mean, we'll have a much better idea of what's happening with the total numbers after Silver Lake's meeting. But I think everything's in flux. I think everybody, starting off in November with $600,000 in excess capacity, knowing that half of that was gone to the debt, still felt pretty good that there was, you know, almost 2.5% of the tax levy not used. And then the numbers came in and there's not much that, you know, we can do.
Maybe tonight we can schedule another meeting, put in the March, and then we'll have more information. And our next version, when we update it, will make those changes. This all sort of happened in real time, some of these changes. But we'll go to 60% for special education. We'll add in the grade personnel changes with the sick leave buyback and the two longjevities. And we'll add the out-of-district vocational. And so those pieces will be helpful.
Joy, can you just remind me what the reimbursement was last year for circuit breaker? Was it 65 last year?
I believe it was.
And was it 65 the year before?
I do recall.
I mean, I think you should go higher than the 60 because we don't really know.
I'm more comfortable doing that, too.
Every dollar counts, but that swing isn't that significant.
I would way prefer to have that as a little bit of cushion so I can go to town meeting.
And I guess while we have the floor, I guess that $200,000 approximate increase for special, out-of-district special education, does that have any legal room in it for anticipated new students? Or, I'm just thinking for next year's budget, if we run up with what happened last year, then we would have nothing to fall back on.
I'd ask for you to come in case you have some specific questions. And we did, in that, a little bit of funds in the event of that to somebody who lives there.
Do you know if there's any amount that are aging out? Like, is there something that could start to kind of?
I calculate all of that when I do the budget for you.
Okay, so that includes anybody that could potentially be aging?
Graduating or aging out.
Do you have an idea of the cost of students? I know you can't give us the exact which student is which cost, but is there a way that you could give us a graph of ages and costs to see where the costs are for the out-of-district? So if we're looking at, you know, if you broke it up into three years, so 22 to 19, 19 to 16, 16 down to 13 and just broke it down to age three, so we could see where the spending's occurring?
I could, but I'm not sure if that will get to the information that you're looking for because within a particular age group, you may have one student tuition that is maybe $25,000, $30,000. And within that same grade level, have another student that has a $200,000 tuition. So I'm not sure if that will be at the heart of what you're looking for.
I think that would because it would allow us to forecast if we have a lot of students and that are five years from aging out that are in the $200,000 range. Or if we have most, a majority of students that are under age 10, we know that we're going to carry this high cost for these students for a long period of time. It really comes down to whether or not we can take that data and go and forecast. You know, these students are starting to age out and we'll be able to expect a reduction in special ed. And is there a way to use that money when those costs drop towards something else? Or, you know, if they're all at age three, are we looking at, you know, really intervention for those students? And do we think those costs are going to drop off?
And we recognize that students could move into town and move out because that's really been the biggest fluctuation. I know that you've had students that have had to go out, that have been in school and have had to go out for services. So we recognize that that number does fluctuate. But I think what Gordon's trying to say is, I mean, I haven't seen sped go down at all and that's just the nature of the business because even if you had the same students in that line, I mean, you have costs that go up and that's something that we don't have the ability to control. But I think what Gordon's saying is it would be helpful for us to at least forecast. So if we knew that the majority of this expense is in the younger ages, we know to kind of expect that. And we know there's going to be some fluctuation, but at least there's an average there to kind of follow. But the problem is, one placement could be $125,000 that comes in and changes that.
How often do they change, too? Is it typical for kids to slowly need less services as they go along?
Well, that's our goal. Our goal is to provide the accommodations and modifications that students require, but to transition them so they're more independent learners.
Is it difficult?
It's typical for the majority of our special education students. But did you want to go back to the grade analysis? When I take a quick scan of the grade levels of the students that are currently out of district in town of Caliphax, the majority, and I'm happy to do more of a breakdown for you, but I think you'll find this interesting, the majority are grade 7 through 12.
Wow.
And I think that has been the case because we haven't had that opportunity to have the program.
Yep.
And now that we're on the cusp of having the programming at the middle school and then graduating those programs into the high school, I think we will see a reduction in those numbers. So, I mean, it is interesting to take note of that, that again, the majority are 7 through 12.
Do you think with the program that you're trying to install at the middle school and high school, by looking at the current students, that you would be able to save money from that line and move that, move those funds into the Silver Lake line? Because that's where the special education would take place then. It wouldn't be out-of-district special needs. So if we were looking at cost increase at Silver Lake, but we knew that the cost increase was actually a decrease of the out-of-district special needs, then again, that would be something to look, to forecast that information.
It is a fabulous question and it is one that I personally cannot answer. And the reason why I say that is because there's been conversation about creating the programs as a revolving account as opposed to out of the Silver Lake budget. So I'm going to deflect.
I'll leave Christine, but I'll let you know. I was interested in trying to figure out towards a way that we could almost budget Silver Lake where we had the regular day and had the program separated. But there is no way of breaking the assessment to separate those figures out that we could figure out how to do it because our concern was by increasing those programs, Silver Lake budget would increase and then when we have to make the cuts, what would be cut would be the regular day would be unfairly burdened.
Yeah, but forget that where the number is. I think it's a valid question that Gordon had and I'll follow up with another question after that with another program.
But I was sort of where he was because, to be honest with you, the revolving fund is a lot of work to maintain separate from the budget, so we were interested in that. Christine can probably, because we have been going back and forth about this a lot.
No, no, but before Christine goes, because this is all accounting and we don't, we can talk about accounting, but that's not what we're talking about. So what we're saying is, when I looked at the Silver Lake budget, there's a new program that's being introduced in the Silver, I know we're not at the Silver Lake School Committee, but it affects you. That new program that is proposed, is that a cost-effective savings for the town of Caliphax? Meaning, is there at least one student that you've identified that is right now receiving services outside that will be brought in from outside into Silver Lake? I don't need to know the number, but I want to know that there's one student that can be offset by that.
I will tell you, I can share with you that there are more than one student that is currently being serviced in our programs over at Keston Intermediate School in our substantially separate programs. That if we do not have the extension of those programs at the middle school, they would all be going out of district for a tuition rate far greater than what we would be looking for if this were to function as a revolving account.
So that, forget the revolving account, I don't care about the revolving account, really. I'm looking at the cost. Because I don't want the shelves being moved around. I want to talk about the cost of the student. So what you're saying to me is that there will be savings, a potential savings for the town of Caliphax. That if this program is not created, then that we potentially have a higher tuition for outside services if this program is not created. Okay, how many students is that? I don't care about the numbers, I just want to know, how many students?
At least five.
At least five students will, so that sped number could have been significantly higher. Okay, that's, thank you. Now, my other question is, last year, we created a position at the elementary school for a behaviorist and I was told that that would be a cost-effective savings. So now we're a year in, how much did the town of Caliphax save having that position in place? And if you don't have it now, you can get it to me and email it to me. I just want to know that that cost was offset.
Some of the questions you're asking, they're very legitimate. I absolutely understand that. But we have privacy issues and some of what happens is when you start getting into numbers, people become identifiable, especially when the numbers are low. It is also difficult to say what could happen if something wasn't there.
But if you sit here and tell me it's a cost effective savings last year, then you should be able to show me that it was a cost effective savings. Because if you were saying it was going to save you money, then you should be able to show us that it saved us money. I'm not saying it was a bad decision. I'm just saying the taxpayers need to have an answer. And if we have SPECT continuously go up, we're eventually going to have to have answers to that. And budgets went up last year, I need to have an answer for that. So if you don't want to do it publicly, that's fine, I appreciate that. But I think that it's a legitimate thing that the town gets to hear that answer.
I think with the behaviorist in place here in the building, and things that she's been able to do with our staff, we have been able to manage students here that typically we would go to Marie and talk about possibly outside placements. So I, there's, like Joy was saying, it's like we're talking about what could have happened, but.
But I was told that's what was, we were going to save money, because I remember sitting in this room during the budget season last year and saying, it's a new position, because we didn't want, we did, it was supposed to be a level service budget. And I was told that this would be a cost effective savings. If it didn't save us money, then that's the answer, and that's fine. But I want to know, did it save us money? Or did we at least?
I think it absolutely has. Because we haven't sent any students out this year at the elementary.
You have not at all, not one.
Not in this building, no.
Would it be possible to present a historical trend of what it would have been?
Not what it would have been.
No, what I'm saying, historically, the past three years, six students.
It's, again, it's difficult with numbers that low. It is just so identifiable. You know, there's privacy issues that we have to be careful of. You know, and again, I think what Kane is trying to say is, this year, we have successfully kept all students in district. That in and of itself is a wonderful thing. And the classrooms are, the behavior issues have been under control. Things are, more learning is taking place, which is everyone's goal within the building. We're better servicing the needs of our students. I truly understand the want, the interest in concrete information. I do not believe we're going to be able to give you concrete information.
Okay, my other question is, I know this year we've been maintaining what we have. Are there any students that are going out this year from the elementary school?
Not that I know of. Not that I know of. I don't know if I can answer that.
And again, Kim, this is information that's not.
I hope not.
Then we'll have a conversation off camera then about it. That's fine.
So I guess that the way to answer Kim's question would be to say, what was spent last year on the behaviorists for sending out? Because that's an easy answer. We can get a concrete, and that doesn't affect students. It's just, what did we spend on that?
It was a staff salary.
And what we spent on it this year?
Fifty-five, sixty thousand probably. I don't know exactly.
Well, because last year was out of, like, we had a behaviorist that the kids were sent to. Now we have one in-house?
No.
We have an in-house behaviorist. And we were able to fund it from the, I don't know if savings is quite the right word, but from the retirement of a couple of teachers. So rather than reduce the budget by the savings of a retirement, that's how the position was funded. And to Kim's point, you were supportive with the thought that it would provide savings to the budget.
Right, and I understand, and I'm sorry I'm putting you on the spot. And again, we can have a conversation that's not on camera about it. But I'm glad you brought that up about the retirements, because I need people to understand for all the new members, Alex, I'm picking you now. Is that when the budgets go evolve, right? In your own home budgets go, and in any savings, like when we look at retirements, any retirement savings should be recognized within the budget, because that's what helps to pay for the steps in the lanes. If not, you're sold. We have nowhere. So when people retire, we shouldn't create programs. This is not against this. Or, oh yeah, we've got this extra money, let's spend it. Because the budget has to stay fluid, so that pays for the steps in lanes. If not, then your numbers would go sky high. So last year, when we had asked for a level service budget, and we got presented with this behaviorist and the building maintenance person that I was not in support of, when we talked about this behaviorist, and I was told it was a cost effective savings, and I know how SPECT goes up, of course, we were going to support that, because it was going to be a cost effective savings. So instead of recognizing the savings from the retirements, we funded this position. So our budget's a little higher than it would have normally been. So that's why I'm like a dog with a bone, trying to figure out the savings. Because again, with budgets growing and not having the income to support that, because it, two and a half percent remembers, so anything else going up, more than that, has to come from somewhere. And so that's why I want to know, and I think that it's good for all of us, that we ask those questions. That you ask those questions, that you have the history and that you ask the questions of, hey, this is what presented. And I will ask the same question at Silver Lake with this new program. So I will want to know. I don't need to know names, I don't even need to know individual. But we're going to need to know so that we know, and we have documentation, that yes, that worked. And we can say to our departments that have been holding their line or having, like, not growing in any capacity for years, well, you know what? We did approve this particular position, but this is what it saved us. That's why I ask.
Just thinking, thinking of the number though, because like they were saying, you don't know how many kids it helped. I wonder if the whole system you could get is looking in the past years to see. But it's not going to be perfect. And I know, like, we had a behaviorist come to our house, and she helped immensely. And you can't put a number on that either for how much she saved us from doing other things. But could we get her, what she's asking, like, the last few years of what we spent?
But you, as a member, should want to know the answer to this. You, as school committee elected officials that represent not only the parents of the students that are in the school, but eighty old women, but you should be asking the question, was it a cost effective savings? I don't need to know the specifics of the person. I need to know a roundabout reason that it worked. It worked. I want to know it worked.
Well, wouldn't Kane's answer of.
No, I kind of want to see more than that. I want an analysis of more than that. I think your taxpayers deserve it.
So, Marie, you said the five students right now are in the Kinston program, and they'll be transitioning to the Silver Lake program next. Are those five students, if the program is not created at Silver Lake within the budget this year, what would the approximate cost be increased out of district special ed? Because that's what the real savings is to Halifax if that program goes through.
Correct. And again, it depends on the individual students and the type of placements that they would be attending. But average out of district tuitions, again, at a minimum start at forty thousand dollars.
So if the program now, again, so I'm not holding you to that exact number, so two hundred thousand dollars.
And that's an average that we usually go up, Marie, or is this just a special year that we have five people?
I'm sorry, say it again.
My point is, do we just happen to have five students that it benefits this year? Or would, do we see an average of five people that you get to this point, and then we don't have a program, and then on average, we have five people going out for outside services?
Again, it's kind of tricky to answer. The students would be going into different types of programs.
Yeah.
And I can certainly take a look at what we have coming up for some of the younger students. You know, I usually try to forecast out a couple of years in advance.
Or you could look at what you, instead of looking at the future, you could look at what your past has been, which means the last three years, when you have a middle school student at this level, how many people go for outside services? How many people have gone for outside services instead of having this program in place?
The programs haven't existed, so.
No, I know, but you would have had, yeah, if it didn't exist, then let's say I had three students that were in similar situations. I know they vary in different schools. But I could say that over the last three years, if I had a program like this, five students in two thousand and seventeen could have gone. You know, two students in two thousand and fourteen could have used the program. Like, instead of, like, when you're developing this program, I'm sure you looked at the history of how many students were going out.
I looked at the history as best I could.
Oh, okay.
Because again, I'm entering my, into my third year, so I didn't have a lot of history to.
Oh, we don't keep records of that?
There's been a lot of changes in staff in terms of how the record keeping was over the years.
Oh, that's true.
And I can just tell you, when I give my school committee presentations, that I've been collecting data since the first day I arrived. And I've been presenting that historical information to the school committee every year. So my school committee presentation goes back to FY fifteen.
Yeah.
I can't look back any earlier than that. And I'm happy to continue with what I've been doing in the data collection and the comparison.
Yeah.
The data over the years.
I guess my question for you is, when you were looking, so you didn't have any records to look at? To say, okay, I say in two thousand, am I, do you understand what I'm asking?
I understand what you're asking. I guess.
But remember when you hired me, we had virtually no programs.
Yes, but I'm saying to you, I understand that, but we had still, we still had students going for outside services.
Correct.
We should have that empirical data as the number of students that were receiving outside services.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
We should have the empirical data as to how many students were receiving outside services before you got there, while you're there. Doesn't matter who was there at the school, we have the data.
Yeah, we do, and I did present that in my PowerPoint. So for out of district students in FY fifteen, we had twenty-six. FY sixteen, we had twenty-six. FY seventeen, we have twenty-one. And I would need to get your account for today.
But the data should still be in previous year's budgets.
I'm not sure.
You may not be able to identify which students were getting it, but the hard numbers are in the budget.
They may be, but we've also changed our budget system, the actual program that is used. And I don't know how that data was collected before I came on board. I don't know if it was farmed out to that extent. And we've also changed our special education data system as well. So I can't even go back to the previous system and generate a report from years past. We used to use SEMS Tracker, and now we use a program that's called Tinead. When we switched over, we also lost the capacity to do all of those historical reports from SEMS Tracker. So in a lot of ways, we really started from scratch.
Okay, so you have no historical data?
I don't think that's what you're saying. I guess what I'm asking is, you have three years of data. Is there something in particular you're interested in beyond three years of data? And again, the diagnosis of the children, I'm not sure what your goal is.
I think what Kim is looking to be able to review is, say it's five students this year that are moving into the K through twelve program, would come off of the special needs out of district vocational. Is it, is it, is the five, the average number, is it really three? Are we going to see just a number to try to project out? The thing that scares me really is if this budget includes the program at Silver Lake, and it's a, and it would be an additional cost of two hundred thousand dollars, and that doesn't go, that program is not approved by Silver Lake.
Then we have five students going outside.
Then we have five students going outside.
For services.
Again, I know Kim wasn't interested in hearing, but it is a revolving program. It is not part of the budget, and the revolving program was voted. So it's already been voted as a revolving.
The program is.
Impact the Silver Lake budget.
But how, so, how is Silver Lake going to fund those positions that are?
It would be tuition based. The tuition will be charged.
To the town.
So is it, it still would be like an out of district vocational?
But as it reduces.
Tuition comparison.
Okay.
Okay, so for example, what we do with the revolving accounts is we determine what the entire operational costs are.
Okay.
And then figure out what the tuition should be for each of the students in each of the programs.
Okay.
Okay, so for example, as I said, some of the tuitions, the majority of out of district tuition start at about forty thousand dollars. I had here that for one of our programs, the tuition for Halifax for one student will be twelve thousand.
And is that built into the number of the outside services?
Yes.
So that program is already approved, but what about the new program that was in the Silver Lake budget? I thought this was the program that you made.
They're not in the Silver Lake budget, they're a separate revolving account.
Okay.
Silver Lake did approve the programs, because it would fall into Silver Lake just in preschool or some of the other programs.
Yes, but there was a program that's four retirements at Silver, at the middle school. And there's a new program that sounded like a special ed program. This is not that program.
No, we.
Okay, so that's what I thought. That's what I. Is there another SPECT program that's being created because of that retirement?
There is a program called Bright, which is to help students that have been either out, and these aren't necessarily special education students, these are students who've had a concussion, that are having trouble transitioning back into school. Students that are going out for anxiety, maybe having difficulty coming into school. So it's providing support to keep them within the school so they're not going out for other placements. But they're not necessarily special education students.
All right.
So we don't have to worry about the two hundred thousand dollar possible switch. That program's in place.
Yes, well, it will be.
It will be in place?
Yes.
It's not in place right now, but it will be?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm proposing, and again, you have, I can give you a copy of the PowerPoint that I presented to the school committee, but we're proposing a language-based learning program at our middle school. And we're proposing an eighteen to twenty-two program to support our students that are going to be with us till age twenty-two. Right now, those students, because we don't have that kind of a program, we tuition them out to other programs, whether it's through the ICE program at Bridgewater State College, or North River Collaborative has a great community vocational program. But for example, that community-based program from North River costs about forty-five thousand dollars. And if we can internalize this program and keep it within us, we can easily reduce those tuitions to under thirty thousand. And we have quite a few, we have six students total in the region, not just Halifax. But six students across the board that are about to bridge into that eighteen to twenty-two program. So that would be six students times forty-five thousand dollars that we would be looking at for tuitions. So that program is most definitely, the time has come.
But that, that program right now, the way it's funded, is through the out of district vocational line?
Out of district tuition.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
And are you thinking about perhaps tuitioning in students from other districts?
It's. I'm sorry, vengeful.
Yes.
No, and that's what, you know, when we first hired you, Marie, like, that's what you're, you were so great about those programs in East Bridgewater. So I'm glad that you're able to really do those. And I hope you understand where I'm coming from, is needing to know the savings, needing to know that we're making progress.
And I hope you understand that there's only so much I can.
I didn't know about your historical data being erased. Like, that's, that's really unfortunate.
Can I interrupt for a second? So the children in the hallway want to make a presentation to us.
Oh.
We'll ask a bunch of discussion, and then I'll go in.
Yeah, sure.
Recommit, okay.
Sure.
Mr. Boe, can you introduce them?
Yes, absolutely. These are, I want to go around. These students are in grade five. They're partners in the Stenner's class. They've been working on a research advocacy project in the class. So they really were excited about having the opportunity to come in and share us. So we have a few students.
Sorry to make you guys wait. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Is there a spot where they, or you feel that?
I'm standing right there.
Do you want them?
Right there?
Yeah, they can go right. They can go right down, though. The camera's that way, so.
Okay. Okay, so I just wanted to thank all of you for having us. So, I just wanted to thank all of you for having us, and this is my, these are my fifth grade students. We just finished our unit called the Research Advocacy Unit. There were six different questions that students got to pick from, and I think we just have two questions being presented tonight. One question is, are extreme sports worth the risk? And the other one is, should we be, should we be protecting sharks from humans or humans from sharks? So, this is a really advanced unit for fifth grade, they had to do a lot of real research, and then they had to cite all of her research within their writing, too. So, Ms. Savage and I are very proud of that, so. You guys are on. All right, so I think we have Kenny first.
Hello, Halifax School Committee, friends and family. I'm Kenny Stevens, and I'm, I'll be, I'm, I'm doing the topic, are extreme sports worth the risk? Think of, skydiving and football, two totally different sports. The chances of a lethal accident is way higher in skydiving. An extreme sport is a sport that's cranked up an arch or more dangerous. Next, um, some extreme sports include half-pipe snowboarding, skateboarding, or surfing, and much more. Shawn White, for example, is an extreme snow, snowboarder who has won two Olympic gold medals. Extreme sports are a life or death si-, um, situation, but in soccer, baseball, it's, or any regular sport, it's not nearly as dangerous. The reason extreme sports are controversial is because more deaths and more injury, um, serious injuries happen in these sports. On the extreme sports should be ban-side, people say it's too dangerous for, um, for people to be doing it, and there's too many tragic accidents. On the other hand, people say it's nice to live once and, and live life to the greatest. I mean, you only live once. I think extreme sports should not be banned, because for some people, you're taking away their dreams and you can change their future. People, first, people already get into bad injuries in regular sports. It wouldn't be too bad if they happened more often. According to Google, in high school, um, in high school football, two million injuries have happened, and in, and mountain climbing, only one thousand six hundred eighty deaths, deaths have happened. In the United States, a hundred deaths have happened in scuba diving a year, and a hundred more in the rest of the world. In boxing, five hundred deaths have happened in total. Next, some, um, some people, um, live off of extreme sports to make a profit. On the website Google, mid-level professional skaters make a profit between fifty thousand and a hundred thousand dollars a year. High-level skateboarders make five hundred thousand to one million dollars a year. Last year in professional bull riding, the riders got paid twenty million dollars, and the owners of the bulls got paid two million dollars. Lastly, some people do extreme sports because they won't do something real, because they want to do something really exciting in their lives, they want to make the most of it. For example, my dad went skydiving because one day he knew he wouldn't be able to experience that kind of excitement. Some people try extreme sports thinking it would be a one-time thing, but then realize how fun it is and make it a hobby, um, make it a hobby they love doing. That's how, that's how some famous extreme sports people get their jobs.
Um, good evening, my name is Riley Joyce, and I'm gonna be reading about the debate on extreme sports. Are extreme sports worth the risk? The crowd gasped, snowmobile driver Caleb Moore falls to the ground with his four hundred fifty-pound snowmobile crashing down on him. Everybody waits in suspense to see if he's okay. A week later, you hear the news, he died from a concussion and bleeding around his heart. What would you be thinking? Extreme sports are dangerous activities that some people choose to do. Some examples are skydiving, base jumping, wingsuit jumping, and monsoon truck driving. Miles Dajure, base jumper, once flung, flung himself off a bridge fifty-seven times in a single day. He says he wants to do as he can while he has time on earth. These sports have a high rate of death or injury, although if these people love to do it, there's no stopping them. Others think that these people shouldn't be participating in extreme sports. When the sport is a passion, it's worth it. Extreme sports are worth the risk. First, people who do extreme sports are most likely experienced, trained, and practiced a lot. For instance, kite surfers have to be skilled at surfing and flying kites. They learn and develop kite skills on land before heading out to sea. Extreme Sports by Kate Scarborough. Another, you have to train from classes to pre-team, levels one through ten, elite team, and then a few more years. I Got This by Lori Hernandez. Lastly, a lot of urban climbers spend years working on their skills. Extreme Sports by Jim Pyke. I think if people weren't experienced, like, with extreme sports, they, they would probably train a lot before reaching the goal of competition. Secondly, when there is good equipment, there's less chance of injury. To begin, Aaron Corret and Stephen Sled made a special equipment to mimic the side of a mountain slope. By mimicking the side of a mountain slope, snowboarders can practice tricks safely by landing on something soft. Safer Slopes by Stephanie Warren. Ending, once Martin Strel swam three thousand seven hundred twenty-three miles. For backup, he had two armed guards on a boat beside him, ready to float, throw flesh to distract the piranhas, just in case anything happened. Extreme Sports by Jim Pyke. Would you climb a super tall building with nothing to catch you if you fall? I know my answer, no. When you have equipment that well, that's a different story. Lastly, anybody would rather die doing something you love than die knowing fear held you back. The whole family would be unhappy if I go back, said Sherpa Guide, but our profession is mountaineering. It'll be difficult for me to do anything else. On Mount Everest, Sherpa guys have a dangerous job helping climbers, by Newsman. The entire time I was in a cast, I made sure I stayed in great shape. I continued to do whatever skills and conditioning I could. Since Lori Hernandez loved gymnastics so much, she decided to do anything possible as a gymnast. So, she tried a no-handed cartwheel, also known as an aerial. I Got This by Lori Hernandez. Imagine having to quit your favorite sport or sports because of the crowd? No, nobody won. It's not anybody's choice, it's yours. What would you do if your favorite thing was taken from you just in the snap of your fingers? Join me to agree that extreme sports are worth the risk.
Good evening, school committee members, families in Halifax. My name is Julie LaFond, and I'm here to present the Research Advocacy question, should we be protecting sharks from humans or, or humans from sharks? Uh, I think we should be protecting sharks from humans. You're swimming along in the cool water after a fat, slippery seal, once suddenly, out of the blue, you see a white fishing net closing in on you. You pace, you don't know what to do, but before you can make a decision, you're taken where you can't breathe, and a sharp-pawed dagger approaches you. Shing, fins fly, and the last thing you see is your own body parts being thrown into a bucket. How would you feel? A shark is a flesh-eating fish that's generally large and furious, and most live in the warm waters or seas. Sharks are mainly innocently slain for mostly their fins, but act, actually, almost every part of their body is valued in different parts of the world. The scientific name for a shark is a celotomorpha. In the wild, these creatures can live for twenty to thirty years. Sharks live in the water, warm and cold. Sharks eat anything from barrels to glass bottles that are thrown to the ocean. It all depends on what they're in the mood for. Sharks do live with their parents for, from three to four months to two years, but after will leave their parents and live on their own. These animals are fierce predators and are definitely at the top of the food chain. Should we be protecting sharks from humans or humans from sharks? In reality, they both kill each other, but who should we be protecting from that person slash animal that's doing more damage? This topic is controversial because humans and sharks, in reality, both do bad things, but to convince you, I hope my opinion will persuade you. On one side, a person could say, on the news, a shark killed an innocent fisherman only trying to catch a few fish as a living, or, on the other side of the argument, we kill millions of sharks each year for some poison soup. Stop. I claim that we should be protecting sharks from humans, and portion how much we kill these interesting animals. We are actually the dangerous ones, save the sharks. Firstly, millions of sharks die each year and are rudely thrown in the water without body parts to die. According to www.huffingtonposts.com, a hundred million sharks each, die each year, and to be exact, anywhere from sixty-three to two hundred seventy-three million sharks will die each year. Also, shark fin soup is a, a flavorless bowl full of strands of shark fins, from www.stopsharkfinning.net. So, who wants that when you're killing millions of sharks for it? Oh, and, some boats that catch sharks can suck up more than seven thousand one hundred sharks in a single trip, from Saving the Great White Monster by Lauren Tarsus. Shark fin soup is brutally killing sharks. I hate this process of killing sharks, and I think we can't continue this. Also, if we kill all the sharks in the underwater ecosystem, which gets one-third of our air, it would collapse. Twenty-eight percent, one-third, of all our air is from the ocean, but you would think you can't kill the ocean. But what if I told you the ocean animals are part of the ocean? That would change your opinion, and that's from National Geographic. And, these sharks may be scary, or whatever you think of them, but they play a huge role in the ocean ecosystem. They keep all the animals in balance. This, I think, concerns me. I want air, everyone wants air, or we would die. So, I think we need to take action and stop this. Thirdly, sharks are amazing predators, and we have been, and have been on the planet way longer than we have, so stop killing them. Sharks are amazing, uh, sharks have been roaming this planet for about four hundred fifty million years, from www sharksavers.org. Sharks have fast-twitch muscles, a carved skeleton, even endless teeth, and those are just a few features that makes these, these animals so amazing. Visual.com. I think my evidence is very interesting, since sharks have been on this planet so much longer than we have. I'm also interested because sharks have so many advanced features that make them so People treat these animals horribly, and we cannot let this continue, and you truly should try your best and donate to the cause at www sharksavers.org. So, don't hesitate, save these awesome animals.
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Rose Helsick, and I'm here to talk about the topic of, are extreme sports worth the risk? Extreme sports are sport with a high injury or death rate. Some examples of extreme sports are skydiving, bungee jumping, air vibrating, and monsoon truck diving. Caleb Moore is an American snowmobile racer and driver, for an example of someone who does extreme sports. Some people think that extreme sports aren't worth the risk, while other people, like myself, think they are. To start things off, if you have the correct equipment, there's a less death or injury rate. According to the article, Safer Slopes by Stephanie Warren, Aaron Corret, and Stefan Sled made special equipment to mimic the side of a mountain slope. By mimicking the side of the slope, snowboarders can safely practice new skills. On the boat alongside, they had two armed guards in case pirate attack. They had buckets of flesh and blood ready to throw in the water to distract the piranhas. Extreme Sports by Jim Pyke. I don't know about you, but I would feel a lot safer if I had the right equipment. Also, you would be able to safely practice new skills. I think that the snowboarding equipment is a great idea. Next, extreme sports are worth the risk because people who do extreme sports are trained to do what they love to do. Many urban climbers have years of experience and practice. Extreme Sports by Jim Pyke. In the book, I Got This by Lori Hernandez, she explains how you have to train from classes to pre-team, pre-team to levels one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, and then elite. And then you have to train a few years after that, including college. Kite surfers have to be skilled at surfing and flying kites. They learn how to do skills on land before heading out to sea. Extreme Sports by Kate Scarborough. Would you really go and, let's say, jump off a cliff? No, you would be trained or at least be a little prepared. Lastly, it is the love of the sport that pushes people to do what they do. The whole family would be unhappy if I go back, he said, but our profession is mountaineering. It would be difficult for me to do anything else. That's from an article, it's called, On Mount Everest, Sherpa Guides Have a Dangerous Job Helping Climbers, by Newsman. The entire time I was in a cast, I made sure I stayed in great shape. I continued to do whatever skills and conditioning I could. I thought, well, I can still do a no-handed cartwheel, so I did. I ran every exercise possible to keep the rest of my body in peak condition while my wrist healed. I Got This by Lori Hernandez. Would you really stop the sport you love just because someone said that you might get hurt? I know that I definitely wouldn't. Peter Len's dad doing something he loved, that is all that matters. How would you feel if someone came and told you that you couldn't do the sport that you loved? How devastated would you be? I would be so devastated. This is why extreme sports are worth the risk, so join me in saving the things we love to do the most.
Thank you so much for having us. Thank you. Thank you so much for having us, everybody. Excellent job, students. Excellent. Great job. Research.
I'm proud of you guys. Wow. And I'm with you on the sharks. Absolutely. Well done. Very well done. And I was wrong.
Yes, I know.
Thank you for your hard work, you're eating.
Oh, yeah.
Some of them.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Which is a big support. You're not getting any hanging up.
That was so great. It's not as if we're taking a budget discussion.
So, reopening the budget discussion, I'm sure you were able to crunch some numbers over there for it.
No, he was just verifying that, that right now, it needs to go up forty thousand from the number, right, Joan? That we need to adjust the elementary number up forty thousand?
Uh, we have.
Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand, because we have, because you're bringing sped down by twenty-six?
We're bringing sped down by the twenty-six circuit breaker.
Yeah.
Um, and then we will be increasing twenty-four six, six, twenty-four thousand, six hundred, excuse me, for cyclic buyback.
Yeah.
Two longemities at three thousand each are six thousand.
Yeah, and then the out-of-district vocational.
Vocational.
Is thirty-five.
Yes, okay.
And we'll, um, we'll bring in the budget next month with those changes. If that's okay, anything else you want to say?
Yeah, we're gonna dive into our budget further later in our meeting tonight, so I'm sure we'll have some movement. And, you know, obviously, open-minded communication between both of us, going, all of us going both ways is always helpful, so we can keep that going and attend the meetings, and could you figure it out?
Thank you.
Yeah? Do you have anything else you want to say right now? Anybody on the panel?
No, I think it's been pretty well-covered, what the dilemma is at this point. I said, I think it's pretty well-covered what our dilemma is at this point.
Yeah, yeah. We certainly some of that, I mean, we're all, we all in the town, we're all kids here, so, and we all have children.
And I know we, as a committee, wanna, we wanna go forward and present to the town a responsible budget, but be behind the budget that you present. And we wanna absolutely be behind that. We don't wanna have any, any dissension amongst the ranks, so to speak.
Which is why we ask the questions that we ask, because if taxpayers are gonna ask us, we need to have the answer.
Yeah, for sure. And not leaking it out on the floor.
Yeah. We don't want that.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having me. Really appreciate it. I was hard to everybody, I would say thanks sometimes, so. Okay, so with that, we're going to put a question here, right? Obviously, discussing it, moving forward.
Are you going to close it or postpone it to the next meeting?
So, I asked you about that, and apparently, you can open and close it. So I asked you about that, and apparently you can open and close it.
Well, we, we, we always talk budget, but we don't normally have a legally posted public budget hearing. That's just meeting the MGL. So next month we'll be talking about it again. Um, but this is just meeting the vast general law requirement that school committees have.
Okay, I just...
Posted, illegally posted public budget hearing.
Just wanted to make sure that the committee would still be taking input.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. Definitely. Um... It just worries me how you didn't get the information, like, in my simple mind of, here's a flash drive, you know, of what I've done, and then you take over, oh, now we're not using this program, we're using this program, but I'm still able to look in my QuickBooks about the two thousand and ten, because it's on my old computer. I'm just trying to make sure in the future, when, hopefully it's many years from now that you go, that there's an easy, here's a flash drive of the valid information. It'd be much easier to move forward. I have a lot of detail in my record sheet in my reports that are shared. We have the provision, it just, it would be extremely time consuming to access it. So it just isn't set up nicely and organized in a easily accessible way. Can we just make sure that we get them to go with the... Absolutely. Always just trying to be sensitive, you know. Like I said...
I think everybody should do everything exactly the way...
That's what he told you. He gets that. Thank you.
So with that, we'll close the public budget hearing and open our regular meeting at seven, seventeen... So the first thing we have on our agenda is reorganization. So in our little packet, we have the chart session.
Did I miss anything else?
No. So we aren't completely reorganizing.
That's correct.
Yeah, but we're not, like, no, we don't have to, just a spot if you wanted to, that, uh, to just move along. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, I'm open to anyone who would be anywhere, if they wanna nominate themselves, or somebody else for any sort of position, I'm completely open to it, like, if anyone wants to share, you just jump right in. Please, please try, yeah. Um, but we, um, do we, we have two people here?
Because policies, the... Um, yeah, usually.
Okay, so there's a blank spot in policy currently, I sit on that committee, and we've just combed through one hundred and twelve policies, so we probably won't meet again for, you know, a while, probably. So, um, but we should kind of fill the spot, so if somebody else wants to jump on that, that would be...
We're all...
Okay. We'll pour you some drinks.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comment, if I stop.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so anywhere, anyone else, there's a few blanks to hear where Kim Serd, who is no longer with us, and, um, you know, there's some alternates that are empty, or if you wanna boot somebody, or is anybody interested in giving any other duties up? Have that conversation.
So, I think I spoke really briefly about PTO liaison. I don't mind being a liaison if I can't do day timings, and they alter it every month.
Right, so we can do the opposite, I can do day...
Yeah, I, I can do evenings.
Okay, okay. So that we guys do it just depending on the meeting. And do you have...
Was on, this is one of the...
The night one. February one eighth, seven, yeah.
It's on you.
I got it.
Do you have a date to, to March? Is it always the same?
It will, in March, it will be on, I wanna say it's sixteen, hold on a second, at nine AM. Sixteen, nine AM.
So they go week to that, or...
Friday.
And then so April will be, is it peak point back to four?
Yeah.
Okay, we're on demand. Okay, thank you.
Okay. 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 Um, we were just discussing attending finance committee meetings. So it says down at the bottom, budget of committee members, so it's something that's open to all of us. So maybe we should have a discussion, maybe monthly at our meetings, to who's gonna kind of tackle going to finance committee meetings moving forward. Personally, that, I know that I would like to go on Monday, but it would be nice if somebody else could be there, because one, I'm gonna have a kid, and you meet a baby probably, and, um, he loves, so their next meeting, they usually meet Mondays at seven.
Four.
No, they meet every Monday now during the season. So, um, if, like I said, I plan on going Monday, but between, you know, sports and children and everything else, and my husband not being able to help in that regard, I might be listening with one ear and not the other. So if someone else could come with me, that would be great.
I can do this one bit.
Or both of you. I mean, I mean, I might not be able to go at all, so...
Well, they're not gonna kick anyone out.
Yeah, you certainly are not gonna be there. So I think if maybe we could commit to somebody going to the next several meetings, if they have them, and I know moving forward that they start talking about, like, you know, one meeting they'll meet with the fire chief and the police chief, so we obviously don't need to be there for that.
And much, um...
Yes, maybe, so. So maybe, maybe once we go on this next Sunday, Monday, we can talk to Mr. Andrews about whether or not we're gonna be discussing the full budget. Exactly. So if that works, that'd be good. Yeah, and we can certainly, yeah, as long as we're not corresponding to each other about it.
I just wanted to ask.
Yep. Okay, that's, that's good. So the three months prior to that, that's Monday, or obviously, we will also be done. So we need an alternate for negotiations, even though the, you know, we're out in the middle of that at the moment. What, I was gonna say, I think we're done then? Yeah, we are, but I still should kind of be there in case, don't you think?
Yes, it usually...
We'll be forward.
And also, that tends to be the sick bank committee.
Oh.
It tends also to be sick bank committee, if somebody applies to sick bank, they tend to be same people.
Um, so if somebody is interested in being the alternate for that?
I was gonna say, I'm gonna say, are you running online, stuff like this?
That is like, you just don't know.
So it's on a monthly basis?
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, right now, we, we wrapped up a little bit, so. We also need somebody on Union Thirty-One. Okay, I'm, I'm there. They, we do have a meeting coming up with Thursday night.
Thursday.
Thursday night. Yeah. So unless, um, can you, can you be there for this time? Everyone's bothered by having a...
I'll be on it, yeah.
Where's the middle school?
High school.
High school, school.
A for large.
Yeah, yeah.
Thursday. The eighth?
Did you hear about it? It's fine, it's all gonna go. As long as Malpers each now goes, but no, no, here we go.
Is it, is it seven?
It's at five.
Five. Five.
You can go, Allison, okay, I'm gonna go too, so Bob, if you could go.
I'll go.
And we have the representation from Halifax. Um, do, can we make you the other guy, somebody alternate? Because right now I'm the alternate.
Yeah, I guess so.
All right. All right, we'll just do that one. I think that's sufficient.
Yeah.
Um, by law, we only have an alternate, because Kim was the, they like, never made, taken next year.
That's wrong.
Okay.
It's a great committee name.
Good, never going back. So then we just need youth and rep, from whatever Linda's unavailable, to speak with Dick Steele, it's kind of a...
I mean, I just call one, I guess.
Yeah.
Never now, will be around, yeah, so.
Okay. Um, yeah, and that's pretty much it, right? Yeah, here to go, good, awesome.
Did he use you, but?
Student presentation, we just have that, that was wonderful. Uh-huh. What do you like, we acknowledge your schedule? Um, we have minutes from our January second meeting, our regular meeting, and our executive session.
They... Could we be close to the double, the whole thing?
Yeah, next meeting, yeah, okay. So, um, we have minutes from our executive session from January second that we need to vote to approve, and at this time, we have so many executive session minutes that we've held, so it would probably be appropriate that our next meeting, we sort of rattle off all the dates and release all of them together, because the contracts have been ratified now, so it's appropriate to release them. So I just need a motion to approve and hold these for now.
So move.
Second.
Paul's there?
Hi.
And then we have the minutes from the, um, student meeting meeting, and the meeting we have, we slept in, we appointed Alex. So those need to be, I need a motion to approve those.
So move.
Same.
Um, all of them there?
Hi.
Hi, sorry.
I'm a little slow.
And then we have the minutes from our regular meeting on, in January, January second.
To approve, I, I took it back. I need a motion to approve the executive session for January second.
No, no, regular meeting, regular session.
Oh.
We already did executive. Oh, I'm, my, my, I'm just...
That's why I say so move.
So who was it? You?
So move.
Okay. Paul's there?
Hi.
Okay. Okay, so next, we are assigning warrants, so we start the waiting.
Did you keep that big pile together?
Yes, I, I have it still together.
So who's rubber bands?
Oh, yeah, but I didn't remember my hair. Always lose, and then, and then it goes back.
Too much.
Yeah. So, who, school, school committee correspondence report, um, I have some notes for you. I don't know why these keep ending up in the, um, box of the town hall, but they do.
I have some. Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, I'm, I'm, yeah, that's, you have fun with that. And, um, also, under correspondence, we have somebody, a member of the Silver Lake School Committee that wishes to reopen the discussion about revisiting the start time, changing start time in elementary school and high school. So I think that that's something that's probably come down with, like, moving forward, um, depending on when they, I would assume if they're going to call on that committee, or is it Lakeville, or is it Arkansas, to be part of it, or someone else, if they're gonna be needing to attend that or, uh, putting some stretches and figure out what they're going from there, if they need to survey and, and say, um, it has, it's, there is no solution that we've come up with, it doesn't have to be financial implication. But some people, it's their thing, so they wanna revisit the issue, so.
They want to...
Yeah, they wanna swap them essentially, so the elementary school kids go in earlier, and the high schoolers go in later. But we can have that discussion more in depth moving forward on both sides of the issue, can be kind of a pop-up issue for some people, so. There's a lot of variables that come into play and financial implications. But, yeah, so I wanted to make you guys aware of that. Also, our senior superintendent here has been given an award.
Must be something to it.
So she was the, Joy Blackwood, was the recipient of the Massachusetts School Library Association Administrative Gift Award. This award honors administrators who have made significant contributions to the promotion of effective school library programs and services. It recognizes the responsible and influential role of the school administrator in developing successful school library programs within their own school district that influence the community at large. We believe that your work at Silver Lake Regional School District serves as an exemplar for supporting school library programs. So there is going to be an article written up in the paper, is it gonna be a work of local?
Um, I think it is.
Okay. Um, so they had sent this little word, they probably don't agree with her, do you like to share it with you? Okay. So it says, she's all embarrassed, but we're gonna talk about her anyway. Even in difficult financial times, Mrs. Blackwood has supported the library program throughout the budget process. She has passionately advocated for the need for certified school librarians in all the schools in the district. She has created opportunities for collaboration and creation, including tools for research, scope and sequence, web resources for parents. In addition, she has contributed, contributed to and approved our long-range plan for the school libraries. Mrs. Blackwood has participated in school-wide events that promote a love of reading, such as Read Across America Day. Mrs. Blackwood has supported new school librarians by providing them the opportunity to work with a mentor and to participate in a formal mentor protege program. This experience helps newly hired librarians navigate through their first year and provides them with a solid base for future years. She encourages and supports attendance at professional learning conferences, such as the MSLA Annual Conference and Mass Q. At school committee meetings, Mrs. Blackwood has acknowledged her work of the school librarians, has acknowledged the work of the school librarians. Mrs. Blackwood respects the librarian's position in having a wide view and integral role in the school as a whole. She recognizes that we have an important part to play in supporting all staff and all students in their academic endeavors. Frequently, she calls upon the librarians to create special projects with the belief that we can always be counted on to deliver a quality product.
Yeah, it's very nice that we do that. I don't know, it's a surprise.
It's complete surprise.
Yeah, just got to meet him one day, so. I went up to the district, um, in March, so.
It's, it's very... You ever listen to award and some dinner?
We're in heat to see.
Yeah. Unfortunately, nothing has...
Some free books?
Library does have actual money.
Okay, that's it. So, yeah, we're really, um, most, all the work you do, you somehow find the time to get an award for a library.
Yeah.
That feels good. Um, I don't have any other things besides reorganization, things like that. Um, anybody like to say anything on the agenda the next month? That is pressing, that you can think of as a problem? It's, it's, um, down here. Meeting schedules, if I can...
Monkey.
Monkey, please, yeah. Reporters standing committees, so first is the policy. We met several times, once today before this meeting, and we've completed going through all of the one hundred and twelve MASC recommended policies, some we adopted, some we did not, some we changed to fit our district accordingly. And right now, in your packet, you have the list, or the, whatever, the policies that at this time, we need a motion to waive the actual reading and accept it as the first reading. Um, and if somebody wants to make the motion and do the, you know, wiki bow routine with these, that would be fantastic.
Yeah. I make a motion to waive the...
Waive the actual reading. Yeah, but accept as a first reading.
Of the, uh, updated on the first reading ACE, EB, EE, AE, AG, BGE, GBGF, IK, JII, JJH dash R, JLCC, JLCD, JQ, KBBA, KCD, KE, KHB, LDA.
Can I have a second? Second. Paul's there?
Hi.
Thank you, Alex, and, yep. So as a committee, we decided to delete a few policies from the manual based on the recommendations from the MASC, so we just need to make a motion that can be accepted as, as a committee.
So move.
Done?
Oh, boy. I don't know if I can see it, I don't have my reading glasses. All right, deleted policies from the manual based on MASC recommendations, DJG, IHAE, IJJ, IJM, JBA, JICG, JRA dash R. Too lucky to even forget.
Thank you, awesome. Okay, all's fair.
Hi.
Okay. Um, negotiations, the update that we have is the HGA, or the teacher's contract hasn't wrapped up, so we are done officially with negotiations for this, like... So we are done officially with negotiations for this, like. And.
Fantastic, that was fun.
The three hours. Um, PAC, did you?
Yes, we did, we met last week. Um, the representative on the PAC from the Silver Lake School Committee asked me, um, to announce that they will be looking for a Halifax representative because Mark Aubrey is not rerunning, so. So, uh, they actually requested. They were looking, they said maybe Bob, maybe Bob would like to join us, that's awesome.
He's a handsome name.
Yes, that's why.
Say it again, because we have a representative from Silver Lake.
The woman who, uh, I forget her name. Yes, she was there, she said that, that Halifax was going to be needing a representative from Silver, or, at the Silver Lake.
Right, so that would come from their committee?
Yeah, I'm confused, did I, that, that, is it correct?
Okay.
I think we might have been misunderstanding.
Okay.
We asked a representative from Silver Lake and a representative from Halifax, so you're staying in Halifax, correct?
I don't mean on that, I mean on the Silver Lake School Committee.
You mean the next.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, so whatever Mark Aubrey holds, she said he announced that he was not rerunning and she wanted me to ask or just present that out to let people know that they want me to run, so not for PAC but for.
Okay.
Not with the PAC, alright.
So they want him to run for Silver Lake?
They said that.
Who is they?
A couple of people there, they're all.
Because there is, my understanding that there is a former member who is planning to run.
I, I don't know if they are aware of that or what, but they just wanted me to mention it, so I would mention it.
Okay.
And the other thing is they, uh, it's funny because Maria just mentioned this as well, but they just started a new program at the PAC for the eighteen to twenty-two age bracket. Uh, and for kids who already have received a diploma but aren't needing something to do for, from the ages of eighteen to twenty-two. And, uh, they are now starting to turn people away because they have so many people that want to be a part of it. And so they opened up another classroom as not, they weren't expecting to do that, they opened up another classroom. And now we're at the point where they're just about to start to turn people away. So, honestly, it was a huge thanks. And we're still, we're still in the process of hiring a new, um, executive director. So that'll start, um, in the next month.
Thank you, awesome. Yep, uh, Linda, give me the wrap-up date.
Doctor Dixiel, they're in the middle of basketball season for the boys and girls, it's going well. And there's a fifth and sixth grade winter dance this Saturday. Whatever, I just.
Check and check on her.
Okay. They're getting the floors, sanding and painting, um, February vacation they're looking at. And I didn't realize, but you can repase for that, it's twenty-eight days to stand and refinish and paint that floors, which.
Well. Kind of go back and forth.
We take care of clothes.
We do, we, we're, Matt works out a deal with Dixiel and I think we alternate because we do it a couple of times a year.
Yeah, listen, he did say this, I, I had no idea.
We can go, yeah, we can go back.
And then there are also.
Is that the whole floor?
Definitely needs to be done.
Just saying to refinish that entire gym floor?
See, no, I thought it was supposed to be better.
I think, I mean, we used to, we had somebody who did it for years and it was a lot more than Matt and Dick found this guy that opened a piece, it was fantastic.
Is it right down to the bare wood or they just?
No, they just.
Stop and finish.
Yeah, they just.
With the big rotary thing out.
Yeah. So we do it right before school starts in August and then we do it again before.
It really looks pretty good when they do it.
They do, they do it break top, they really do.
He also said they're going to be working on the bleachers and the basketball booths and stuff, taking votes and whatnot to hopefully help with that. And they're paying for a part of that project too.
I, I was in there the other day and I turned on myself this sweep of the bleachers because I was like, say sweet. And no, they don't get cleaned, so apparently I turned on myself to do it. I was like, this is, okay.
Wow.
I, I don't do anything else, I just decided I would start sweeping.
Now I have an image of a cow running.
And this whole PTO meeting. Did you go to the last PTO meeting too?
No.
Was there, was there a PTO meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
So nobody mind, I was there. Oh, that's great. You did, were you?
I was there.
You were, you want to get distracted?
Uh.
They probably talked about what Christmas is Santa, or the Merry Christmas.
Yeah, we already did that. It was very small, it was a couple of tents. The real, only the real big thing is Boosterthon, it's on, on the docket right now.
It's the what?
The Boosterthon.
What is it?
So the Boosterthon is something that Sharon Smith had proposed to us from the PTO and said that there's this company called Boosterthon that will come in and they'll do a fundraiser for eight days, they just gave them a cake and it raised a huge amount of money. So what they do is they, uh, promote, uh, character education throughout the week, what are the eight days? And then on the final day, they have a fun run, and I think in Kingston they did a glow run. And they have all types of incentives and I believe it was a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars.
They cleared it.
So they take a proportion of it, so when they're coming in on March fifth is when we kick off our fundraiser here. So what they do is they have a team that comes into the building, they'll come in during lunch and they'll talk about it with all the students and they'll just push it and promote it. And then on that day, and then they have all these videos for us to share with, with the students. And then on the fourteenth is the actual day of the run.
What, I'm sorry, a physical run?
Yeah, they, they said, actually, we're doing it in the gym, so they're going to set up.
Yeah, I'm, I just donated to my niece, so I must have done the same thing, and it was called the Fun Run. And you could donate online, and I said, yeah, that was so easy. And it was like, you know, you could donate a certain amount or a dollar per lap, but they tell you, uh, the most laps they can do, so. I was like, I'm like, whatever. So, but, so they'll tell you, like, I think it stops at thirty-five laps, I think it's about that. So you can do a dollar or two dollars, or you can just go on that lap.
It's, we're excited about it because I think it is an event that, I mean, it's, it's really only eight days, but it, it raises a huge amount of money. Because the PTO kills themselves and they do all these events throughout the year and sometimes they don't get a huge profit on it, but this one.
So, I'm sorry, I know you said they charge students, but how do you get into the, like, how do the families, first ever?
Um, what they have, they have this setup where they email, we send out all these emails and you can pledge online, so you can.
So you're going to do email blast?
Yeah. So we just met last week, just to kind of give, kind of the logistics.
And then my brother, my brother just put it on Facebook for any family members and friends and he just put the link.
That's, I'm sure that's.
Yeah, that's.
And I think that's the biggest piece, is that you can donate, you know, you can bring in cash or check or whatever, but you can also pledge online. I think you can just send it out to whomever. I mean, it's, from what I've been hearing, it's, it's, it's an excellent way to kind of do some great fundraising.
What has been their most, most successful, most money they make from, is that the Santa's breakfast?
Uh, no, the other one, um, the books there.
Oh.
Spot out the book there.
That one's the book there, that's the coupon book.
Oh, wow.
I think that usually comes up with a lot of, it's because of the.
And how much about that? So I'm like, don't even take that back, I'll write back.
Again, I'm just.
No, I'm just curious.
But I don't think Santa's breakfast, I don't think it's, it's that hot. And Santa's breakfast is a lot of work.
Yeah. They're always, like, desperately needing volunteers.
Yes, yes.
Sounds like this is going to be a little smooth.
That's, that's great, we're excited about it, so. And, and they come in and they send the team in, so they're here, so you're kind of just hands off and watch them. I'm not sure what Brian and I do, who knows? We're excited about it.
The round's going to be the fourteenth of March.
Um, March fourteenth, yes, March fourteenth, that's the actual day of the run.
Oh, the actual.
We're just going through the logistics now and get all information.
Okay. PTO part.
We have a whole heck of a lot of PTO information.
So, capital budget, honestly, we're. Oh, thank you. No, I haven't reviewed, um.
Can I? Excuse me, someone, someone grab a question. Are you still going to be talking about the budget?
Yes.
Because we have to talk about capital planning.
Yep, yeah, I'm.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So I haven't reviewed, Matt, um, we are discussing contracts of administrators right now, so we're in the process of getting those together. Unit thirty-one meets February eighth at five o'clock in Silver Lake High School, we'll just talk about that, so we have updates by unit. Um, so Roger, you want to talk about your little piece with the calendar events and enrollment?
Sweet, um, we have, we are over six hundred students now, we're at six oh three.
Oh, we haven't changed out?
We're looking for five hundred seven. I think, yeah, last time.
We have a long sign out there?
It's still, I think, at least today.
Really? Are we still getting that grid?
It depends.
So, no, I didn't, it continues to rise, but, uh, it's great, so we're excited, doors are open. And, open there. Student council, I, I probably should have recognized, Ms. Parker and Ms. Savage, they are the two that kind of head up our student council and they've done a fabulous job, I think we're set this every month now. But they continue to do a great job, they did the citizens of the month assembly just last week and they also were pushing the random acts of kindness, so. They're just, the way they're able to organize it, the stu-, it's student run, they really go out and kind of put the signs up for the applause and when they're supposed to be quiet and just the way it flows, just, it's excellent. Just to see the students, they take photos of the students, the teachers, it's, they do a great job. And that, right now, they're actually looking to, um, have a design for the mascot of the Halifax heroes. So that is currently in the works with that team, so stay tuned. We, Mrs. Orkut, a longtime teacher here in Halifax, is going to retire, her last day is going to be Friday, but not. So we have developed a team of six of us, myself and Brian, and then we have the grade five team and a special ed teacher to screen all the candidates that apply on school spring. We have over thirty applicants to go from February till June. And we selected a handful to bring in an interview and then we actually got down to our two finalists and then, um, we had them do lessons in the classroom. We sat in there and we picked the standard and we were in there all observing and critiquing and analyzing and, um, we think that we passed it. Yes.
So you're re-interviewing the permanent position then?
Yeah, is this just there?
Um, well, we're waiting on that, so right now, we currently have a teacher that's on a maternity leave. Her name is Jen Belski and we're waiting to hear what her plans are in terms of if she decides to return. And in kindergarten, we have Tiffany Easter who's filling that long-term subposition, if that makes sense. So we're kind of waiting right now to see what happens.
Well, Mrs. Orkut will be missed, she's like everyone's favorite.
She will, she will, she's been on that team with Ms. Beltsch for a long time, so, um, but I think she's got some big plans.
Yeah.
She's going on the Appalachian Trail, I think she's.
That's awesome.
Her husband, they have, I, I can probably send you the information, but she is ready to go, she's.
They have like, they have like a YouTube channel.
They do, they do, I will send it because she is so excited about it and I think.
And the kids are pumped.
Pack their house and shut it down. They're ready to go.
Uh huh, it's really exciting.
I'll, I'll send it on, but it, it's, it's really exciting to see that she's just ready to go. I think she's actually been walking to school.
Are they going to be?
Like, that's right, she lives, like, over towards the high school.
Wow.
So she's been, that's kind of getting her, do you guys know? She's been back at me to school, so every morning. She's, she's a true person, I'll, I'll send it up.
Stop talking down here.
Um, our cast schedule is released, we, the PLA is the first up and we have eight days that are in April. Starting on the third, each grade level had, starting on third grade, has two days of testing. Start the third, go on the fourth, and then we go to the next week, the, on the ninth to the twelfth. And again, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth after vacation. I think that's third grade that goes out. But we did send out the schedule for that, so parents should have that, it's also posted on our website. And then in May, we'll have the math and science for grade five. Windows side doors and fire suppression projects, we routinely meet roughly every two weeks before town hall. For the windows and doors inside and the preliminary bids were in, um, it sounds like there were some pretty decent numbers that came in.
Under?
At the.
Under.
It was definitely under. I don't know if it's been.
Which will help.
Oh, sure. Has it been announced yet of who, it was granted?
Uh, no.
No, I don't think so, but it sounded like they're all bids online and it sounded like there was some good numbers. And in terms of the fire suppression, we're just continuing to plan because I think that, that may be one of the more disruptive projects, the summer project. So we're just trying to figure out logistics and how to work that out in the building. If there's things that we can do here prior to the end of school that would be too disruptive, then we're, we're looking, having those discussions of what we can do and get it done.
Have they thought of a summer home yet?
Actually, I, oh, Charlie's gone, I think we're just looking at that, and what are we going to do and.
Put you up in a great job.
I cast a you cast.
He's looking for an office there.
I could work, I'll be at the town hall.
Yeah, his friend and deadened, I think will take him in.
So, uh, we are working with that, the architects and the contractors they've been in the building, just kind of checking the stuff and just working with Matt. Just to kind of answer any last minute questions that they may have, so it seems to be going well in terms of the discussions we have.
I want to thank you and Matt for being so cooperative and really making it so easy for the architect and the, and the OPM and all the contractors to be here. You've been so wonderful and Matt's been just really great.
Yeah, Matt, Matt's, I think he actually really enjoys.
Yeah.
Being part of it.
Yeah.
Just kind of getting into, getting on the roof and getting into areas of the building that I've never even knew existed. And he was talking about the attic and he's like, oh yeah, you can get up there and you can see for miles up there. Where is the attic?
Remind me of the pipes you don't buy, yeah, it would be fun.
Um, so it's, as I was saying, it's going well, I think, with working with the architects for the roof, that it sounds like we have familiar faces to work with, so.
And there will be no, um, activities for students.
Right, I know, last, last month, you said, Brian and I were last pulled up to remember the summer plan.
Yeah, it's not an option.
And in terms of the budget on our end, I think it's kind of, Jill and Joy and Brian and I and Matt, we've all kind of been back and forth in terms of. So it's a, it's a pretty frequent discussion that we continue to have, especially getting time up with the finance committee and see if there's anything else that you want to take a look at or questions that we can answer, and we can go over there and do our best to. And a few upcoming dates, um, we have a PD day on Friday, February sixteenth. That is a new day, it's, we haven't had that in the past, so this, just a heads up on the radar that that is. Typically, we haven't had the Friday before that vacation, so it is a PD day for teachers and of school for schools. Then we have that winter break, nineteenth to the twenty-third, our next PTO meeting is on February twenty-eighth at seven PM. On the fifth, we will have an all-school meeting where we kick off the Boosterthon, so temporarily, we just kind of get everybody inside about what's happening. And then on the fourteenth is our actual Booster-Thon. So we'll be setting up a briefing, but Booster-Thon, it's Sharon and I are gonna get on and nail down the last thing.
Christine, I'm ready. Thank you. We have James and Slasma. I'll just bring a couple to your attention, a couple of the highlights, if you look at your point of view tonight. On page three of our B T L. The deficit in Special Education Project Services has grown from ninety-six hundred to just over ten thousand dollars. Based on what we know right now, that's where we expect to be for the end of the year. The next category will be, new situations of development, Special Education Transportation. On the financials, there's a deficit of four hundred thirty-one dollars, but that would be grown, we had to make some changes with some students, and that's gonna grow by. And then if you look on our Audit District Trans- Tuition Accounts, right now, you're seeing a deficit of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, but that's before all of our circuit breaker money comes in. Once all of our circuit breaker money comes, they would, that will be covered. So we'll be offsetting that. And then just once again, bringing your attention on the last page, the surplus out of district location, right now, is sixty-two hundred dollars. We do have a student move-in in December and we will own that transportation for the end of the year. But we will, we will have enough to get it covered up. So it'll be a useless there, there'll be a little left over for the end of the year. And that's it, are there any questions?
I don't know if you have a budget.
Ms. Peru, do you have a quick little question?
So I'll pull out some viewpoints from the curriculum update. The technical coordinators and the professional development committee have been asked to review the plan to district campus success, to start developing action plans, particularly with an eye towards planning professional development for next year. The winter newsletter was sent to our community and a nice feature that I'd like to thank the art teachers for is that this time, instead of using clip art for our decorative sessions, all of the sections were displayed student art. There's a great deal of student art in this, in the winter newsletter, and we hope to continue that in the spring as well. As part of our accountability system, Marie and I are going to be working on what we used to call the Coordinator Program Review. Now it's the Mass Tiered System. Marie will be working on the Special Education Indicators, I will be working on the Civil Rights and the English Learner Education Indicators. And so we will be doing document review and reviewing student records, record reviews as well. That will be due in May of this year. And so we attended a training, it was January thirtieth. We attended a training to, to learn about the new expectations in the system, which has been in place since the.
So essentially, what we've done is we've taken a Coordinator Program Review process, which evolves every six years, and halfway through that, we have what's called a mid-cycle review. So what they're doing moving forward is basically having two shorter versions of the Coordinator Program Review. So this is kicking in as we would have anticipated going into our mid-cycle. Instead of that, we're doing part of the fuller Coordinator Program Review. This is what all schools and the Commonwealth will be doing now.
And I believe this district has used the web-based monitoring system before, so that's not new. But it is new to some people if they're participating in this, but it's not new to Halifax and Silver Lake. Under the new Every Student Succeeds Act, districts, the state and districts are required to identify disparities that result when historically disadvantaged student groups being taught at higher rates than other students by lower-rated inexperienced or out-of-field teachers. So we're required to examine this data and if in fact that is a trend and if that's happening more commonly for these disadvantaged student groups. That the state now has a report in Edward Analytics that we can use to look at those trends and to keep an eye on it. It's called the Student Learning Experience Report. And Melissa Fontaine and I both participated in a webinar today to learn how to use the data, where to find the data, and then how to address the issues if in fact we find any of these trends occurring in our schools. So we're gonna be sharing that information with our building principals, most likely in March, so that they're aware of any potential trends that, that could be occurring with their students and how they assign teachers within the district. So really, what we would have to do if this were the case is that we'd have to identify the equity gap and then create a plan to address the gap in terms of how we're going to improve teachers who have been rated needs improvement, for example, in terms of placing students with higher need with students with more experience is another example. So we're gonna be working with our principals on that, just to make sure that they're aware of the expectations and any potential issues that occur. At this time, we do not have any of these gaps to address in terms of our data. But our data this year is based on last year's data. So it's really important that our principals are aware of what could, what could surface through the system. Department Heads and Curriculum Leaders will be participating in a course, a workshop, in May, creating differentiation in an inclusive classroom. And they're gonna be using different strategies and universal design for learning as well as technology to help create more inclusive classroom environments. And this was possible through a title program, so that's how we're able to provide this professional development opportunity for them. And then Marie and I, on March sixteenth, will be attending the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's LEAP, Leading Educational Access Project. It's a convening on March sixteenth to promote educational access and equity to all. So we have that coming up. If you happen to go in more depth or answer any questions you may have, I wanted to just give you a little. Sure.
How is, and you might have an answer. How do you put, what kind of analytics do they do to figure out, discover disadvantaged students being taught by the lower?
Sure, so there's all sorts of analytics they can run, and they do. And it's, it's pretty interesting. So you can sort, so they have, they can identify students by, let's say, gender. They can identify students by economically disadvantaged. They can identify students by race. They can identify students if they're English language learners. So those are some examples where historically, there might be an achievement gap. And so if these students in a school district are traditionally being placed with the teachers in your district that are needs improvement, then you're already putting students who are at a disadvantage and additional disadvantage with that. So they also collect the data on all of our ratings.
Okay, so, so it's not, Matt, it's not, the analytics that present to you are not statewide, they're actually getting narrowed down?
They're very personal to our schools and, and so they, they help us to examine in that way, in a way that we wouldn't be able to do just, just on our own. And if we did, we would have to devote a lot of hours and, and human capital to, to research those kinds of things. But the Edward Analytics, Analytics System can also tell us what students may be in danger of not meeting performance standards, for example. So we have an early warning indicator system, which helps us with interventions. It can do a lot more than it ever could in the past. Years ago, when we first started with the state testing system, it was a simple achievement score. And then it grew into growth. And now it's a much more robust data analysis system.
But the early warning is still around? No, I shouldn't say around, I'm sorry, that's wrong, I'm quoting. It's still using data from previous years?
For the equity report, yes, for early warning system, no, that, that has this year's data. So we're, we're able to look at current students with their most recent MCAS data, for example, and to provide them with interventions if necessary. But it is a year behind for the placement of students. And I don't know if that will always be like that or if that's just because it's something new that they're rolling up.
Thank you.
One question, E S S A, it's just under a year old, right?
That seems right.
This is, how is it different from what you've dealt with in the past?
So the E S S A will have different accountability categories than before. And if you'd like, I can get a summary for the committee to look at kind of some of the key highlights.
Like, in layman's terms, you look and you go, oh, come on. Or do you go, oh, that's good, you know, like in general. Is the federal government making a jump to hoops? I don't know, am I meaning that?
So the things that they're looking at are all things that are intended to help students. How that plays out and what kind of expectations that puts on school districts still remains to be seen because it is still new. But I think it's important that if you have students who are, let's say, one of the things that they're gonna be looking at are frequent absenteeism. And, or students who don't perform well in ninth grade, who receive Ds in ninth grade, are more likely to drop out or fail. So these are the kinds of things that they're gonna be looking at. They're gonna be looking at student attendance and trying to, they're gonna be looking at social emotional indicators. So for example, what do we have in place for when a student is hospitalized? Do we have anything to help reintegrate them into the school so that it doesn't become a bigger issue? And we're looking at some sort of special placement for them as opposed to how do we meet their needs here? So one of the growing concerns in society, the number of students who are hospitalized for anxiety or depression, for example. Those are, encouraging schools getting more points, schools that can offer, let's say, more opportunities for students or variety. That's, most of us would agree that that's a wonderful thing, but you can imagine that perhaps the burden that puts on a really small school system to kind of fund that kind of variety. So I, I think it all remains to be seen how it all plays out. It's not that there's anything there that's bad for children. It's how is, how is it going to be implemented, how will it be monitored? And what impact, what unintentional consequences could there be?
I'm more worried about taking some of the responsibilities from the state, like the federal government, you know, that's a concern. And we feel, is the Mass, E S A, did that get accepted from the federal?
It was, it was recently approved. It feels, it feels like it wasn't that long ago, I don't know, Kane, if you.
Did it probably be prior to anything?
I don't remember seeing any, and I know on their website they have it, but when they presented it, when they said that it had been approved, there was nothing that, that stood out to me like, oh, it was approved, but we had to change X, Y, and Z. But I certainly can get a, a kind of like a general summary that's kind of simplified. It's not the whole Every Student Succeeds Act because that's over, that's a lot to digest. But.
It's probably on the D L U.
They do, they have a one-page summary that's really quite, quite wonderful, if you don't have the time to read the whole. What do we check with the whole thing?
Thank you.
Any other questions, or something?
Thank you.
Can be done.
Hey, Joy.
Great.
Let's do the fun stuff.
All right, great.
So we have the budget. We had a discussion earlier about some of the changes that we are aware of. Hopefully, you remember to bring your packet from last time you built. So you have in your packet the information that helped us to build the budget. We talked about that before. The information that lacked is some of the information that helped us design it. It has Marie's presentation, it has the presentation by Steve, the presentation by Melissa Farrell on the technology. You know, again, we have some changes that have happened since we last met. The budget is the same budget we saw before. We have not made the changes or the updates. As a matter of fact, it literally was changing as of this year in terms of the, of the costs. The area that we will probably have or possibly could have additional changes at district location, I wouldn't be terribly surprised if we get another student that applies over the next six, seven weeks that would not be as characters, families have, or able first. So we could have anywhere from one to five, but hopefully, you know, the number will be low from the budget implications. And again, we budgeted for the students and we won't know if they're accepted and if they're going sometime until August. So sometimes it's good news, sometimes not as much, to know. So I don't know what you'd like to do with the budget. I don't know if you had any questions, hopefully you had an opportunity to look it over. But I guess it's sort of a quick overview. And Kane and Brian did a really nice job with their write-up. And then at the back, you know, is the information that was from the capital plan, which I think was something the town might be interested in. We haven't really updated the capital plan per se, it's just sort of been the ongoing running capital plan. The town has been incredibly supportive of the roof project, which is wonderful, made huge difference for the building. And then, you know, this summer, again, we'll be doing the windows, side doors, and fire suppression system. So those have been a huge undertaking for the town in terms of capital project. The only other thing I wanted to mention, we did not include in the budget the payoff of the math textbooks. From the conversation, I'm guessing the town may not be interested in trying to do that, I don't know the answer to that, but that is not in the budget. We talked about that, that we've done that when we instituted the science, split it over two years, so it was such an impact. But I, you know, it sounds like maybe this year, we don't know. So, okay. But I don't know if you have any specific questions for myself or Christine or Kane or, or Marie about the budget?
You know, I just wanted to say that, well, just following the math textbook conversation, I, I, my personal opinion is, I feel like we've asked a, a very lot of the town, our taxpayers, this year and last year, with the roof and the building and everything. So in my personal opinion, I, I understand that splitting the cost over two years makes financial sense next year, lessens the burden. But I feel like because we're already giving such a heavy burden to the town with this building as a whole, I just, I think I have like a fundamental issue this year piling things that aren't real needs, you know? So that's just my opinion and I've gone through this budget line by line and I do have some questions, I'm sure we all do. I just think that as a, you know, I just want the town to know that as a committee, I don't want to speak for them, but I know for myself that, that we are aware, that I am aware of this and, and I know that it's, it's a lot. And I do think that some of these things are not necessarily needs and they, they can be put off potentially a year or maybe two. And I just think we really need to have a fiscally conservative mind with budgets, because of what we've already asked for our taxpayers, so.
Question, so for the year two thousand and eighteen, that eight thousand dollars, that's the consumable books that they write in?
Yes.
And then the nineteen twenty, the thirty-two thousand, thirty-four thousand, is that also the consumable books? And, or is it both the, I guess, the consumable?
So what happened in grades one to five was we bought a five-year subscription where every year they send us new workbooks. That's sort of the way they've been doing textbooks now, so that students can write right in it. And then we also have an online component to it. They don't just sell you the online component, they kind of tie it in so you end up with it. When we looked at that, wouldn't be the case. So we had the five-year subscription, it ended at the end of next year. So this, this next year, they'll be looking at some other programs to see, do they want to do another subscription to that same type of program? Or do they want to look at other materials that are out there?
Is there, just, the environmentalist, they just wants a book and a history reading on this paper, and they save the books for next year.
Is that? These are like a workbook, it isn't like a large book, it's like a workbook.
We gotta get into it every year, because next year is different.
Yeah, it, it, you're right. It depends on how you look at it. You know, there are, there are just like a textbook where students would copy the problem onto a piece of paper and do that. That's one way it can be done. But what seems to be working better for students is if it's on the paper and they can just do the work without having to also copy the problems. Or what happens is there's what's called Black Line Masters, where teachers go and they make copies from what's called a Black Line Masters and make twenty-five, thirty sets of the page, and then the students write on that paper. Either way, unfortunately for the trees, paper is being used.
Yeah, it's just a package of a book, so your printed is a lot more expensive than, you know, child.
Copy paper. Like, does that really impact on the copiers? You really as well as kind of copiers.
I was just watching. It's pretty impressive. Keeping the copy is supposed to tone her down.
You know, I mean, like, if we have the same book for six years and every sixth, you know, sixth grader comes in and they have paper and they write the answers to the ones, four, 20, 30, yeah, just need to see that way.
No, there's really a cost saving. I mean, the consumables, I mean, there's other components, you know, online components that, and I don't think there is really truly that much of a benefit of just getting.
But the hardest particular are probably using book if it's for six years as opposed to getting six years worth of books. So thank you.
What do you do with, what do you do with the amount of books after six years and now?
Well, I would rather recycle one book than six.
Well, yeah, as my students are using, as my kids are using them and they're going, I don't know, it's a whole amount. But when it gets to be that we're onto a new curriculum, they get recycled anyway, I'm recycling.
No, I mean, like, well, within the class, like, the fifth grade class gets this book that we use for five years. So if the kids just use it in the class, it was my.
Again, I think, I don't know what you're saying. I'm sorry.
I'm saying that if the fifth grade has this one math book for six years and our kids each go in one each year and they use the same book, but they just write the answers on their own piece of paper. So it's not a consumable book.
Do you believe that the fifth graders, after five years, have not read the answers to the books?
I didn't do that. Do kids do that?
I mean, I would imagine.
Uh, so for the first 10 years I taught and we had textbooks, you know, regular textbooks that they used year after year. After one year, they start to get a little destroyed. After two years, they were even more destroyed. And then something new and better comes out that's more aligned to the state testing.
Yeah, how long about what you said?
So, I mean, we, I mean, in the 10 years, we got three sets of hardcover books in the 10 years.
Wow.
In the last two years, we've been doing the consumables. And my kids like it better, I like it better. It's been just, it's gone amazingly so well.
And there are slight little tweaks from year to year.
That's what it is. So that's the cool part about it is that if there is a problem, I mean, I could tell you how many incorrect things there were in the hardcover math books that I would have crossed out and wrote correctly. They're just in a master copy to remind the kids like, oh, they didn't mean to say that, they meant to write blah, blah, blah. But what happens is with the consumables, you just email the company and say, hey, on page something such, they've mistaken. And the next copy that you get the following year is a brand new one that has the corrective information. Or if the curriculum changes and the state decides they're going to change the standards, or Massachusetts adds their own standards, which they do, then we can say, hey, by the way, we're buying them from Massachusetts. Could you stick those Massachusetts standards in the back of that book? And they don't, at no cost. And that's just, you know, no extra cost.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I mean, I know it was a long time ago, but the cost that we were paying for each, um, book, uh, as a hardcover book was about the equivalent to three years' worth of the consumables. So it was about.
Interesting. Thank you.
So publishing companies have been moving towards online textbooks. And I know that, for example, at the secondary level, there are some texts where, um, let's say you correct them, like an AP, you have pretty much drive in terms of what textbooks would be approved. And the cost of those textbooks is so, um, phenomenal that it's, it's.
College little textbooks.
It's really, it's just gone through the roof. So I, I think a lot of schools are, are, whenever possible, going towards the online text because there is a cost savings initially. Now, if the texts were perfect and there were no changes to standards and everything was left in pristine condition, you, you might realize some savings eventually, but the cost of textbooks is outrageous.
I think they have it down. I mean, every six to seven years, we're probably looking at changing up the curriculum.
And that would be my next question. Joy had mentioned briefly that you, they are looking at, I assume the curriculum managers in place are looking at whether, um, sorry, I don't remember the name of the specific name of the math program. If that would want to stick with.
Yes.
So is that being said, is there a, is there a possibility that the budgeting that we move forward with for the $68,000, they come back and say, actually, we found product Y that more expensive, less expensive, whatever it is.
Absolutely, yeah.
So this is pilot. Yep, so this is brand new stuff that whether the anything's up?
The, what they do is they get a variety of samples of different kinds of math programs. And the teachers look at them and try them out with the kids along with the regular programs, you know, sort of a supplemental material. See how they like them, see if it's what works better for the students. Um, yes. And so what happens with, um, piloting is Melissa's done a very nice job of banking, borrowing, stealing to get three samples enough to actually pilot because the companies don't want to pilot anymore because they're giving you the materials. So she's been able to convince them because we're large, we have three different districts. She's been able to convince them that's a good investment for them to let us pilot. So we've been very lucky that we've been able to do it. To your point, Alex, the cost is a little bit unknown because we don't know which project we're going to pick on, pick on. We will pick, excuse me. Um, slow the tongue. So, um, you know, what she did is she has samples and she knew the price of them. And so she sort of averaged it. So that number, you know, the idea of over two years was, you know, if you paid some this year and then whatever balance was could be a little higher or a little lower.
Oh, no, I mean, like, like, literally, it's a year.
Yeah, yeah. So as I said, it's something we've, we've really worked at doing is trying to sort of keep everybody on the, on the same, um, implementation. You know, because all the kids go to middle school. So, you know, whether they're in Malibu, Kingston, or Clinton, you know, they're all going to move up together and you want them to have a safe curriculum.
So that, that being said, if we decide not to split the cost over the two years and we wait until FY '20, yeah, there's still going to be pilot related programs in our schools.
That's right.
Okay. So it's just, okay.
So we'll have it after.
Yes, yeah, yeah, no, we have, we have it in place and we have it in place next year no matter what.
But FY '19 to '20.
FY '20.
Oh, yeah, year and 20 is what we're looking for.
Yes.
Either staying or switch to more.
Yes.
Right, so moving forward, we can expect to have that straight ticket.
The 34.
No, if we decide on splitting the whole ticket.
Okay.
For FY '20.
FY '20, yeah.
Okay.
Which, again, could be lower, could be high.
Right, right. It should be a pretty reasonable number. So I guess we need to decide when we're homing through our budget or not we want to put half of it in there if we have the.
Put half of it in there now so we can see, put the town, you know, how the town would like us to do too. As I said, it, it is something that, you know, we'll need to make some good decisions on how you want to handle it. I just was trying to point out things that were a little bit unusual. So that was one of the things that to me is a little unusual. You know, adding the money for the personnel that's, you know, has an impact, the extra outer district vocational. And we'll move the, um, uh, circuit breaker to 60%. And the next budget.
So has everyone a chance to kind of homing the budget a little bit? No, we're fully, okay. Um, do we, obviously don't need to go through every single line, like, and talk about every single one. Some of them go, you know, without saying, like, salaries, whatever, that's already set. Um, so if we start at the beginning, we kind of just, anything, anybody else to talk about on the first page or are we good there?
Any big picture first page or page?
Any talking detail, I guess that's what Christine calls it. So it's equal, there are, there's a three-page ones.
Yeah.
But it's, it starts with, you know, 1,100, 920 and the cluttered whole school space.
Point, I didn't mention reading. There's another stat.
The front page is the big picture and then you go to page three, you break.
Yeah.
It says expenditure by month here. Propose a budget, expenditure by month.
That's fair study, yeah.
Each one of the, uh, top left here to the side will say.
Uh, yeah, I was looking in the right place. So has anybody got anything that they want to talk about on that first page? I personally didn't see anything that had jumped out at me that I needed to pass a question off. Okay. Second page. Do you know?
I don't know.
Do we have one?
Here's one, it's a month.
Oh, great. Thank you.
It's in my folder or something.
So we are, okay. So on the second page, there's one thing I would have told them about personally. If anybody else is thinking of a person, please check out, I just want to get one thing.
So we should reverse what's in there. Um, so are you planning?
We, uh, the one that starts with Sherri Cosse. Okay, top of the page it says Sherri Cosse.
And what were you asking?
Oh, I, I don't know.
Question, reimbursement, is that the one that you were asking?
Yeah.
So, um, one of the things that we have found is that we have not budgeted adequately for the number of teachers taking graduate courses. And so we had to do a precedent increase. Um, if you go back to the front page, the summary page, and you look at professional development, you'll see, go back over the years, it was 6,500, then 5,400, then 20,000, um, then 15,500. We're proposing 22,500. Um, this probably reason why that's done is how much have, quite, has, has better teachers? So it was a little bit lower. And then as we've been hiring newer teachers who have to get a master's degree, that number has been increasing. You know, we've had some of these requirements. So that's part of why, um, you know, we do, uh, as part of our negotiations, um, we did make some changes to professional development. So, um, hopefully we'll be able to better, um, budget for that. Um, also in 2019, a good majority of our teachers will need to re-license. You have to re-license every five years and that's sort of like a big year for many teachers. So there may be a live activity next year, depending on whether we're going to classes or not.
I forget, do the teachers have a limit of how much they can, um, spend?
There is now, previously there had not been.
Yeah, so it doesn't go into a family yet.
It, it does, it will be right through to July 1st.
Oh, cool. Thank you.
Is there a notification period the teachers get to let you know?
About?
So.
About taking a class?
Yes.
All classes have to be approved before they can take them.
But I think you also know there's a cutoff date.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, we're $15,000, let's say, um, does everybody have to make, you approve all those prior to they want?
No, they, uh, prior to them starting the class.
And the textbook programs, is that the math that you were talking about?
Well, the tech, hold on, where are you saying textbook on the page?
The very next line, I have to find the logo.
Oh, I'm going to find the page.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I'm.
Well, we, we, so in this copy of the budget, that 34,000 and a half is not in here.
That's correct.
Um, that's only for textbooks that don't include the new math program. So.
The 18, 5 is these five numbers on this, on this, on the side column.
It's the first page to categorize the choices, the other is 34, 5.
Six numbers. Five ones, sorry.
So you know how you were asking me earlier about this?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, I want to, I want to ask you, Allison, about this. It's Star Renaissance, again, I'm not a, I'm a dance teacher, I'm a real teacher, so I'm talking to you now. This online assessment tool that they do, they studentify three times a year to see if they're meeting their, 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 um, their levels. Do you feel like this is valuable, needed? I mean, to me, in my limited world, I know where my kids are at. And I don't need an assessment three times a year to know where they're at. What do you think?
I mean, it's, it's hard for me to say because I only teach math. So I only have to know where my kids are in math. Uh, it, I can imagine being an elementary school teacher would be 10 times more difficult to know where they are in reading, in writing, in mathematics, you know, uh, and how they are in social studies and then everything else that goes along with it. Because I see my kids, you know, for six minutes and then they leave. And, you know what I'm saying? And they have them all day long. So they really have to spend more time with all kinds of social, emotional, all that kind of thing, you know, because they're with them all day. Um, I mean, I would, I mean, if it's something that you were questioning, I would ask the teachers how they feel about it, you know? Or maybe Kane knows how they feel, um, I don't know.
I know how I feel.
How do you?
I think it is absolutely 100% necessary. I, I just think, I mean, we have, we have MCAS course in that grade, in those grades, 3 through 6. We have classroom teachers for, they have like a reading street or they'll have a divisions course. And then this with STAR testing is kind of more, is a balance between the two. It's, it's classroom data that we, that we can kind of see a comparison across grade levels. So we take all three of those pieces together to kind of identify students who need strengths and weaknesses. So we have data meetings that kind of target all this information. So teachers come to the table, they'll come with their reading and their math and their writing. And then we'll have MCAS data and then we'll also have STAR benchmark data. So we sit down and we put all the numbers up on the board and we're back and forth and having those conversations about what types of interventions we should be putting in place.
Is it general or are you talking about like each child? Like, is it just?
It targets like, it could say, you know, Linda has these targets for these particular standards in either ELA or math. So it really gets different.
This is the program that you, the teachers will actually, the parents who get with all sorts of.
Their parents.
And I will say, yeah, so you, you know, I'm in modern world, you're, yeah, my kids will get SMAT. But you're, you're, you're comprehensive, it's actually, and I'm a, I'm a data guy, but it's actually weird. And you can see, not only, you know, the three times a year, you go over meetings in a volume, but in the spring, you go, geez, why? What happened between now and, and then and now, and, you know, now or not in that percentile, we've slowed down here, it got stronger at that. And I like it because from child to child, without getting too into this bracket, but, um, it's really interesting to see how their comprehension is affecting their, you know, data, data comprehension affects that a big year on the process.
And you can truly genuinely see growth from September to June.
Yeah.
Because you're testing it three times a year. So we do the testing in September, January, May, June time. You can actually truly see the growth and it gives grade level improvements. I mean, it really does. It's, it's, I, I find the tool fantastic.
It also goes beyond the data so that if you're not a data person and you want to see beyond the numbers, you're a classroom teacher, you say, okay, I know Jill is struggling in this particular area. What are some things that I can have Jill do to help get her on target? It provides those kinds of recommendations. So it takes, it goes beyond just numbers.
Kane, one last question. Um, is this just shared within the school? Is this a part of our curriculum? I mean, I know obviously MCAS.
This is just us. We have our data teams. What will happen is we'll pull our team together and we'll sit down and have meetings when we do the testing and kind of break it down. It's just a great help.
It helps the teacher personalize, which is what we want to do, especially if we want, it's also known as something in our world that we call response to intervention. So we provide interventions in the general education classroom so that students are less likely to fall behind and less likely to need additional support or, or create an issue where we, we may possibly believe that they need special education and what they actually need is interventions in the classroom.
And you feel like the teachers, I know I can't speak for all of them, but you feel like they feel like you do and that's a valuable tool?
I, I think they do. I mean, sorry.
Excuse me. I just, just asking because I, you know, you never know, teachers go, no, all the way to the end, it's such a pain and it doesn't work and who cares? That's why I was asking, so, anyways.
I think everyone looks at it as differently, you know, in terms of how they like to use the numbers. I mean, I like to use the numbers so that, I think, we can encourage teachers to compare state testing data to classroom data, to benchmark data. And we can truly get a really good look at student profiles. Whereas classroom teachers might want to just look at, I mean, they could target just the growth that they're having inside their classroom or particular standards that they want to really work on. They could be working with their colleague next to them and be like, ooh, my kids didn't. They could be working with their colleague next to them and be like, ooh, my kids didn't really hit this, this standard very well. What did you do differently that I should make work on? And then our reading specialists are also looking at the data, so they can also target their groups that they're working with. So they could be like, oof, I've been progress monitoring this particular group of students, and I saw a great amount of growth, but then my other group over here, I was working on a different skill, and they, maybe they weren't making a progress. So there's lots of different ways, but everybody, I think, can benefit from the STAR testing.
And if you think of it this way, like, when I get my students in seventh grade, uh, usually around November-ish, I'll get their MCAS scores from sixth grade. So now I've already taught them for three months, then I see their scores, I see how they're doing, you know, what, what, and that gives me sort of an idea of things that they're struggling in, but I'm already teaching them a new curriculum at this point. So, okay, maybe they struggled in this one area, but that's not even part of my curriculum, so I'm not going to be teaching them that anyways. Uh, and then this way, they, in September, they take it, and they know immediately what's coming, what is for that grade level that they're going to be teaching. And they'll know in September, they'll know again in January, and then they'll know again at the end of the school year. Where I'm gonna find out once a year how my kids are doing, and it's already six months after they've already taken that class. I've already started teaching for three months, so I just feel like just as, yeah.
Provides really pretty colorful graphs. Sorry. No, what he does, it, I mean, the STAR, it just does so many things that, I mean, we're probably just tapping into just a little piece of it.
And the reality is that most teachers are not statisticians, nor do we wanna be. But the data is really, can be very helpful.
Thank you all. So, I, I mean, I don't wanna like, like take pennies, but the only place that I see on this page that we can cut anywhere is, um, the supply line. So I looked back at last year and this year about what was spent in that line, and where we're at now, and I don't think it's unreasonable to cut it by a thousand. That's my two cents on.
You asked me.
On twenty-two hundred, one hundred point five.
Yes, okay.
So that's just my opinion, obviously, you know, can, can, if we need to. But based on what's been spent in the past, and where the trajectory is moving forward, that looks at the financial where we're at right now, it doesn't seem unreasonable, in my opinion. Because I know we need to find places to, to cut, cut things, and even if it's fifty bucks, I feel like it's, that's just my opinion, I mean.
Well, the years passed, we've been around five grand.
Yeah, and we, right now, I think there's just over two thousand dollars left in that line, and we are in February. So, I mean, I, I don't think it's unreasonable, that's just.
Can we go back to the STAR percent?
Yeah.
But my question on the STAR of it was, so we're extending to grade six through grade?
Which is why the cost was more?
But even if you extrapolate that cost, that's still like a seven percent increase. So is it, is it licensed by class, by student, by?
By student.
By student. So I was, I thought we had a pretty level grade, uh, distribution in terms of the number of students, but that's saying, that must be then, that either it's increasing by seven percent, or upcoming grade, or incoming grade two is bigger than the grade six is leaving.
Grade six currently is like seventy-two, it's like one of our smallest grades.
We also don't currently test in grade six.
No, no, I understand that, so if you take the five thousand dollars, you divide it by grades two, three, four, five, so then you add one more equivalent sized class, you're still only at like sixty-two hundred dollars.
Um, I'm sure there was some pricing.
Yeah, okay. Sorry.
No, no, nothing. Well, what we did run into is a couple, really first out of this, that our, um, we were watching the self post, and we did have a slight, we had our rolling increases, and that has been made a difference to it. So kind of build that into this number for the new year.
Yeah, yeah, get a break, get a move into that.
Yep, I understand. Sorry, I agree with you on the, the two to one. Oh, the blue sheet earlier.
Yes, we'll look at.
With these different colors, with these shapes, and the other. Yes, the, the line, grade two, is it ninety-two?
And the grade two now?
Um, my suggestion was the, the supplies for a principal is line twenty-two hundred point one hundred point five. Just by cutting it by a grand, looking at some stuff and some stuff. I mean, obviously, these aren't hard numbers, that's just my suggestion. I mean, it's something that we can discuss, we, we're not going to budget tonight, so if you guys wanna sit on it, or, you know, I think if we all kind of, um, talk to each other about where we think things can move, then at the end, we can put it all together. That's all I've got, everybody? The other question I got.
Anything, right, Charlie?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah.
Just, you're talking supplies for the principal, right?
Yeah.
For twenty-two hundred. I would just, before you go for that line item, maybe there's other areas, because we're looking at our student council and helping them out, because it's a newly formed group, and helping them out with funds, because they have nothing, and everything they have is coming from the teachers. So I put in like fifteen hundred dollars for that, for that line item, I'd see.
Do you, do you think that that might be a conversation to have with PTLs?
Absolutely. But, just throwing up there, I mean.
What are they usually utilizing?
Well, it's, it's, um, different things that they do throughout the year. I mean, they set up posters, and they do different things that, for the samples that they have, and also the teachers are doing their time after school, so I was looking to see if I could get them to stay.
Okay. The other question I have was maybe in this, and I missed it somewhere, is the workshop one? At the very bottom, right above work, it says transmission flow line.
The seventy-five hundred?
Yeah. So I think that's in here somewhere, and I missed it, or am I wrong? I'm just curious as to why the two thousand dollar increase.
And that is an area that we can certainly talk about. I feel pretty strongly that the graduate credit is a number that you should have in there, because everyone has a bag with it. With the workshop.
No, not the tuition numbers, I'm just, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I'm just going back.
Um, but the, the workshop number, what's happening is a lot of the workshops that teachers attend, after they use the money from the schools as funding for the two-way grant, and the two-way grant is a grant that there is some concern whether or not, um, it will continue to be funded as it is. I think we could certainly look at, um, yaking some cuts there, although looking at this, it's.
Yeah, they're already in the negative.
Ryan and I have been really pushing teachers to take some workshops, and, and especially with, um, responsive classrooms. So we've had a lot of teachers jump on board, and that's kind of why that number, I mean, we've already spent, I think we're in negative right here.
Yeah, we are, yeah, we are.
And we're a little over halfway through the year.
And also two-seventy-four five grand was a thirty thousand dollar grant that drove the same professional development for staff, and that was worth a million dollars.
Especially the grant, when we did a presentation. So that's part of the problem, is we've been, you know, workshops out of grants, you know, which means we're in this category right now. Okay, so maybe, I put on the back burner, but just, I was just curious about why they, what you've been doing there is my question, so. Okay, anybody else on that page before we flip?
I got lost, which page?
We were on two, now we're about to flip to three. Okay, so before I open my mouth, I'll let other people talk, because I have four things on this page.
Is it the textbook?
No.
Because that's our issue.
That would be your textbook, right? Subject.
I'll jump. So my question is. Fire away. So Steve's not here, but, um, let me see if I can get, I think I even wrote it down here. So yeah, this is my main question for me to be our, if technology guy, but, um, under the school management curriculum software subscriptions, so there's, um, fifteen thousand seven twenty-five in there, so he gave us a nice, um, breakdown, so that's significantly increased over the last year or so. I understand. Um, my question is, these programs that are being funded by this line item, are there any new programs that we're trying to bring in next year that we don't currently have? And, um, are, is this going to be our new, like, annual recurring cost? Or is this, like, okay, so there's like a, a curriculum support for phys ed, and there's the nursing program. So is, is this now our new? We've always had.
There's a, none of this is new.
But, but this number, this, see?
Yeah, zero.
Yep, so I guess one month from ten thousand dollars, fifteen thousand.
On that line, everything used to be categorized just to all technologies on the left of the line. We've been truly trying to break it out into separate categories.
Okay.
And you're correct, though, there was an increase from last year to this year. But those zeros before didn't mean, doesn't mean that we didn't have it, it just, it was all on the technology supplies, we had just one line for all.
Okay, okay, so this is just a little more detail broken up, so that's why it looks like.
Correct, and if you look down on actual for fourteen fifty, the total for that whole category is fifty-six thousand. So we went from fifty-six thousand to forty-nine, to forty-two, to forty-eight, to then to sixty-six. Because we're just trying to refine those categories that we're using, so you're not gonna have actual information from it, because we just did it in categories. Because we used to work breaking it down that way previously.
So why then the five thousand dollar increase from twenty sixteen seventeen to this year and last year? It's subscription cost, or?
Some of it is subscription cost, and I think, Drew, I don't think that there was anything that he really added, so I'm just gonna go look at my detailed list to see if it was.
Is it nothing, unless, I think Power School relatively knew that, wasn't it?
No, Power School we've always had.
Oh, okay.
So I think part of what happened is the way this self, our new, um, budgeting system breaks it out, some of the categories weren't correct when we were putting them in, as we've been learning and getting more fin- financial. If you look at the difference, it isn't, I think the overall number is fairly consistent, it's just the, um, the rating. But these are all ones that we had. The other thing that we've had, and I know Steve talked about it when he was here, is we're not getting the E-rate the first time we used to get. They changed those rules, and I think that is a good portion of what the issue is.
Okay, so that was, that was actually my second question, is that, that jump in that line from fourteen four to twenty-one seven? So that's part of?
I believe it's part of.
Yeah, part of the E-rate. So my second question in that category was, the internet service, is that also causing our increase in that area? Because we have to expand our broadband, correct? We do.
He did bring that cost had increased greatly.
Exactly.
For the new year, it's about to be eight five hundred dollars for the internet access throughout the building.
And what was it like? In, for this year?
This is off the top of my head, I wanna say it was like two, three, or four thousand for the year. But we've just upgrown the service.
Yeah.
And we, we're using Comcast, we've just upgrown the capacity to that ability. So in fact, you can just set it's more robust to support the school.
Right, okay. So, um, I guess I see in a couple of different places that, like, under supply and repairs on this, the colorful one, is, um, you know, we've, we've budgeted ninety-seven hundred there, but just also with this line under tech equipment repairs, what is, what is that for? Yeah, so it's.
It could be the screen is gone, it could be such a, a keyboard, it's, we have to send those. I think it's a draw, so we try repairs, and, you know, it's like you're saying, just recycling maybe one term.
It could be anything, I mean, Chromebooks, they have certain lights, and sometimes kids pop the keys off, or, or bald sun projectors, I mean, this.
Is there a lot of escalation built in that, though? We've only expended nine seventy-five, we're just adding three. So is he expecting next year three times many Chromebook screen figure out today?
I hope not.
I hope not, no. No, but I, I guess, I don't, I don't, obviously I don't mark on it, but he's going for a fifty percent increase, but he's only used a third of what he already has.
If you have some specific questions on technology, what might be the easiest is if you don't mind emailing them to me, and I can send them to Steve. He's sort of responsible for this section, so I think we're all.
Well, that's fine.
Doing the best we can to answer them, but I, I definitely want to give you the correct answer.
Yeah, I'm curious about that, if you don't mind asking any questions.
If you, and you might be playing something that just wasn't.
I, I know the, um, the increase in the internet is certainly a portion of it, um.
But that's on a different line.
Right.
Right.
But I.
And I completely understand that.
Yeah.
It's also like Chrome, like the hardware going from the, we went twenty-two thousand, six thousand, fifteen thousand, that's. And I know Chromebooks are listed here, how many Chromebooks are they getting? I mean, do we need that many?
And, and some of this could be with the anticipation that we may not get one next year. Remember, we've been able to get that grant, which is from between forty or fifty thousand, depending on the year. Um, once we settle at that over six hundred, the average daily, um, we won't get that money.
Right, well, with that re- re- grant is how we're buying the Chromebooks.
That's, okay, that's, well, that's not the only way, but that is a portion, like, we were also getting projectors for some of the rooms that didn't have them, kindergarten, and, uh, Chromebooks, and.
iPads.
iPads.
Aerohide replacement is in there also.
Yeah, aerohide replacements.
Aerohide replacement for.
That's how we have internet.
The Wi-Fi access.
Do we know when we're gonna know about that?
That's how they tell us, until next spring.
Yeah, we don't know until the summer, so we have to find out when we have to receive the grant.
So it's, it, you know, we, we don't know whether we'll have a crash.
So I, I would like to know. Exactly. Well, yeah, so I personally would like to know if he did build, not potentially anticipating the re- grant into this budget, because if that's the case, and I feel like if we lose that re- grant, then we got what we got with the re- grant, and we need to move forward accordingly. But we cannot build it into our budget.
Sure.
That's my opinion. I don't know if anyone else feels that way, but I feel like if we're giving a one, we're given a one-time grant, it's not something we should be building into our budget to continue to fund, personally.
Okay. Should we email you any other technology questions, or are you just sending them emails to have me answer them?
Sure, that's, or whichever way you want.
Or you want something, you can pull them up.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and then they go in, yeah, that's fine, but I'm like, yeah, definitely.
Sure.
I'm impressed with the re- grant. Yeah, also, while we're talking about the, the technology, the assistive technology, I'd like to know a little bit more about that, too. Because that line item in our budget is, that we have now, is almost, is hardly touched, and.
So, uh, you might probably answer a little bit better, but assistive technology specifically is if it's required on IEPs. So what is happening, if they, like, students might require an iPad, so we don't know when we're building it, how many students may require it, because sometimes things change for students. Um, also, if, if they're, if it's maybe hearing device, some sort of amplification, an iPad, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
We've had, we've definitely had a brief, usually we go into Marie and begging, and she's like, oh, make here. So I have to pull it, I have to pull it from somewhere else that we have, so we, we've never had that built into the budget.
Yeah, it's a newer either, but you have, yeah.
To zero here, so we have.
Right.
We've always been, I think even we begged the high school to send us some of the, the amplifiers, and we're just seeing it more common, and we've had it in past, so.
And Steve had talked about that, and you remember when he came, but assistive technology is a new category that we've added, because it is something that, you know, we were, we were sort of rock and paper, okay, Paul? Uh, but now at this point, it is something that is common enough that we need to have some money there.
Okay.
Um, I mean, we could still ask him about it as well.
Sure.
Only because I'm only spent.
Yep.
A small amount.
Yep. Yes, over eighty percent of that line left in there, so. And yes, at the end of, of our budget cycle, we return to the town whatever we have left over, but I just don't wanna take more than we really need.
Right.
Absolutely. Uh, the only other question I had was on the media tech line. What is that?
That is the person that comes in one day a week.
Oh, that's right, I forgot. Right, that's something that we share. Yep, yeah, okay, exactly. I forgot about that, so. Um, and, yeah, okay. Anyone else on that page?
One real quick. Uh, library textbooks, text library books?
That's funny, because I circled that, I didn't wanna be that guy.
I'll be that guy. What, uh?
Thank you.
Is that something that, what, what is that?
That is just to continue to purchase books for the library.
So is that done once a, like, so on the, the balance sheet, it's still all that?
I don't know, I haven't. I think it's, it's something that, I, I'm not sure how she does it, if it's, if she does it in one lump swoop at the end of the year. Typically, that's how she uses one tally of what. What Jackie's been doing really great is she's been doing Donors Choose, so she does get a lot of items from Donors Choose, and she gets a lot of benefits from the book fair. and she gets a lot of benefits from the book fair. So the PTO gets a certain percentage of, of the, the funds raised for it, but then also there's a portion that kicks back to the library itself. So that's, I don't know if that answers your question, but I do.
No, it doesn't.
Typically, the way, because we run three book fairs throughout the year, and I think so Jackie kind of uses them throughout the year to kind of replenish the books, or, and then at the end of the year, then she puts it in, so maybe just kind of timing of.
So that being said, when I was going through this, I actually wrote that we could potentially cut that line by a couple grand, because we do get a lot of kickback from our affairs, and she's doing diligence, I don't want to kind of completely, I just, I wrote three thousand there from a reasonable.
Three thousand?
Yeah, instead of five. I don't know, I'm not, I don't know, maybe we can get feedback from the library, I don't know how she feels about that, or, and I know sometimes subscriptions to magazines, National Geographic, whatever is covered by that line. So I'm not force flashing it by any means, but potentially cutting it by a couple grand. Keep that in mind. Anything else? Okay. Page four. I don't think we can really do anything on this page at all. Um, although, uh, we were talking about the, well, the electricity account.
What's up with this?
This is our favorite topic.
Have you had electric motors?
Well, we like updated stuff.
Oh, but remember, it's part of the project, when the lighting was done, originally green energy funds were going to be used to pay for our portion of that, and it ended up that they were not used to pay for it, so we're paying one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars a month towards that program for the next forty-eight months to pay that off. So we maybe have some savings in our electricity, and we're paying for the projects to get that to happen. So that will drop off in, something less than three years, or that will drop off. So when that drops off.
It'll go down.
But now with electricity, even though the town is involved, we have, there's a contract with the town for the supply of energy, it's all the other costs that continue to arise, that we can't control the transmission costs, those costs will just continue to arise. So we're running into some situations this year, and we're trying to work towards next year about having that situation.
And I wouldn't count on in three years, because we're out of that, our numbers are gonna go down.
Okay.
Because in three years' time, it's just gonna go down.
Maybe three years solo would be cheaper.
Yeah, I removed what's important, oh, no, again.
No, I think it would be the building's order.
So. Okay, page five. So, this is back to our previous page. Well, yeah, so we still, let's check it out. So I guess my question on this page is, do, was it in, I don't know if it was in our little packet or not, Kane, what this supplies for the building, this twelve thousand dollars collected? Or?
What is the twelve thousand?
Yeah.
Uh, so we, that one, pull it apart. Uh, that one, a big chunk of that was, went to paint, that we, we were paying a lot of the hallways and the classrooms.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, another piece of it, the, we put in for, for next year, the gymnasium backboards. What I think this, this account here is items that we asked Matt to take care of, that.
Instead of contracting out.
Instead of contracting out, so we put things in there that, um, we asked him to do, so we're paying some of the classrooms, and we have, we have Matt, the guys doing it, instead of hiring a contractor to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we, I'm trying to think of the things offhand, but would be items that Matt has done. Uh, he did, he did the, the painting in the lobby, the lobby floor, main lobby. Um, we've had Matt do some patchwork out on the front walkway. So he does, he kind of, is like handyman kind of things.
Yeah.
Um, he recently did some, some of the work in the cafeteria. So those are some of the projects that we, we put aside so Matt can do the work instead of us contracting out.
Was there anything in that group squad, I'm sorry, sent in there? Was there anything that was unavoidable upkeep or maintenance to things that were getting upgraded as part of the project for the time? Broken glass, or, or, you know, a window frame run away, so we have a jam insulation there, or anything?
The other thing I think of is, I think there's a hole in front of the building's rock that we had to do a little bit of a repair.
I understand inside the building envelope, or wall walkways, things like that, but I'm just curious, is there any, any, you know, things he couldn't avoid that he had to do, like, yeah, that maybe next year we might see a relief from because of the investment from the town? I don't mean it's right.
I'm just saying.
Could be. I mean, all.
You'd have to buy ten cases of tiles, because things are dripping above the ceiling.
You're right. I mean, so those, I mean, we, I don't know how many times we send Matt to home, people have to go get tiles.
That's right. Yeah. It's low hanging fruit, stuff like that, if you can look at the number on paper and say, okay, it takes us year, make sure you're going to work with people half the time.
I mean, that, that hasn't typically been in, in, for the building supplies, we've just kind of worked on it, because Matt is so proactive in terms of things that they'll do in the building. So that's why we're gonna look at that.
Can we maybe just get like a, um, like where did you come up with this number? That's what I need to take it out of the air and say.
It does seem very.
I think I have twelve grand next year.
I think it never has really kind of been broken down before, I think because contracted services, if you look at the line above, is such a huge dollar amount, is it.
But it's gone down since he showed up.
Right, it's gone down because he had to have more in-house.
Yeah, so that's the difference, that's what, outside contractor costs, when you're a contractor, it doesn't mean you have to do much of that in-house.
So I have to increase the supply line to, to, to all those supplies, and then in turn, we don't have to call the outside contractor.
Right, but, but Alex can bring the brilliant point though, like some of those things may, may not need attention in the future, because he, he better not have to go buy tiles of the rub, you know what I mean? Like, so I'm just, I don't need, I don't need a dollar breakdown of like, it's thirty-seven ninety-eight per gallon paint, you know, I'm just curious as to where he kind of pulled this number from, maybe we can shoot him an email and ask him to kind of give us an idea of.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think it was just more of taking apart, part of the hundred thousand plus, because if you look at the sixteen seventeen actual.
Yeah, no, they almost perfectly offset each other.
Yeah.
There.
Yeah.
That's really.
Yeah, I get, I get it, I get it, I just also, um, want to caution people from having the mindset of, well, we got twelve grand last year, so we're gonna get twelve grand this year.
Does it, does it say the contracted services went down by six grand because we didn't attach a roof every six grand?
Right.
Yeah, I think that wasn't just the best estimate based on, as we know, anything could happen in a building.
This is true.
Things you've taken here, like, yeah, we're, we're moving past that, but then.
We just don't know.
Right, yeah.
We could get a flood, and we just don't know, but I just, I guess I just, like I said, want to caution the way.
Yeah, we budgeted for last year. But can you mention the things that we built into that with hallway painting, classroom painting? Yeah, so the things that we're trying to take care of, so that we have to, so we have to do that.
But I agree with Summers, you can't get into a use it, or I'm gonna lose the mindset.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the contract services has gone down because of that, like, sometimes seventeen, eighteen, everywhere now. Supplies building, I don't know if I ordered.
But it's come way down from fourteen fifty, one forty-three to one oh five.
We can save some money, but that's.
Hasn't gone up nearly that. In, in four years, it went from one forty-three to contracted services, to one oh five, it's almost forty dollars a dollar less. But the supplies has really gone up, like, eight dollars.
Uh, the only other question I had on that page was the, I'm assuming it's instructional equipment, I don't know, what is that, and why is it eight thousand dollars?
Um, that one is for just kind of general classroom replacement of, our whiteboards are pretty toast, I want to say that they were, at least some of them. The majority of them, they're easily set, so, so we've been replacing that on a regular basis that are, that are. Because I want to say six or seven years ago, when we started installing all the projectors in the classrooms, we bought whiteboards for every classroom. So as those become used and abused, we're replacing them.
That, that does seem to be a pretty good, I mean, he went down by twenty percent, down to eight thousand, and that seems to be a good area where he looked at what he was using, and said, you know what, I have need, I'm only at third and three hundred, I probably need to ten, so that's, that seems to be a good area to be in.
Then how is that different from the next item, replacement of?
Yeah, that is exactly what I wrote on my thing, it's because I wrote classroom furniture, is that the chairs, the tables, the. I guess I'm a little confused of what the difference is between those two lines. Replacement of equipment versus instructional.
Uh, so the replacement of the equipment that we have in here was, um, a paper shredder, a laminator, and a copier for the.
And that's for upcoming?
Replacement of equipment for the five thousand.
So that's the five, right, so it's a copier, a shredder.
Shredder, a laminator. And the copier we're changing, we're, we're changing up, so instead of purchasing copiers, we're going to a different option of trying to.
Is that a prediction of what's going to fail? Or is it?
Right now, we're, we have one copier in the building that we're leasing, so we're it's.
Oh, I guess my question is, why aren't we using the budget that we already have for this year, figure of state?
To fix what?
Like, there's still, so the a thousand dollars from this year is still at a hundred percent? So why are you, why are you, not, not Kane, I'm sorry, why are, why are these teachers forced to use one copy on lease if we have a bunch of employees that, that?
Each year, that line is specifically budgeted, so it's specifically budgeted for, for a certain item, it's not just a rolling number where each year, pick whatever you need. So I'm not sure if it wasn't this budgeted for this year, now it should be a lot, so.
But that's, that was my question, okay, so you knew that I needed, or somebody needed a thousand dollars to fix it, why, why is it so broken?
Yeah.
I'd have to look back at what the.
I'm new, so, this is all stuff from time, I'm sorry.
I'm, I was just, I'd have to look back at what the thousand dollars is.
Right.
I don't know. But this, for the next year's, for that line, I mean, that's, that's a list of devices, and it's a real hard toss.
I'm sorry, I was about to be sure.
Laminator.
Laminator.
Wasn't there a conversation a little while ago about getting a copier for something like that? Maybe the copier is somewhere else. No, Kane was, I imagine, Kane was truly.
Poster printer.
Oh, he might have gotten a. I know. But that already taken that away, I'm sorry. So this, this shredder we have in the office now, or we send our stuff out, do we shred it?
It's just the one shredder we have, it's.
Okay.
Okay, we're right.
And do we currently have a laminator?
Yes.
We do, okay. And it needs to be replaced?
It's just a constant that.
Okay.
Just constantly needs repair.
Okay.
But.
So does that have to say that there's another line on the repair that's going to be going down? It could come out.
That's gonna be the ramp, it'll take the office out of the office on the other side of that. It comes out of the contracted services, I have no idea what's next.
Because that's the other thing to consider, is as you're, and obviously everybody said, you know this, but as you're looking at things that need required constantly, keep, if you're presented with new ones, you can't just leave that repair money in there.
Right. Much like we just have a conversation with home people, same way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a lot of people use the laminator, I just.
My name is very important.
I have a good idea.
Do you?
I do, yes, they're awesome. My little idea, I think one's. We have one for six hundred students.
Yeah. Obviously. But it's random.
We have kindergarten, we have other devices.
I have a problem.
Anything on that page?
Definitely that I have some wants to hold up, let me know.
Well, that's, yeah, that's why we asked what it's for, because I think that we're gonna continue this discussion and determine, and we gotta wait where, you know, things, things can wait.
I just, I don't, I can't get on you there, but I don't want to, you know, knock into due diligence, like, you know, the planning committee asked, and we're not looking at both sides.
I mean, Matt and I always negotiate, I mean, we can look at custodial supplies to, like, Matt likes to order, you know, ten thousand bottles of soap. We don't need ten thousand bottles of soap.
Yeah.
But that's also a line I have to go back to.
Yeah, so we could, even if he wants to come to our meeting, if he wants to talk about, he did that last year, he came, it's a chat, and that's what Justin, I think, wanted. I mean, you know, we all, I guess, we're all for it.
Especially the soap thing, they go through a hundred bottles, they go like this, and you just get a single dispenser that they print.
Oh, he wants a, he wants a bathroom genie or whatever.
Probably him.
Rosie.
That's, that's all right. Um, anything else on page five?
Other, um, contracted services, the cell.
What?
What do you want to say? Right here, it's a lot, it looks like Italian, T-I-R.
What, yeah, what number is it? Four, hi, girl, oh, sorry.
Nothing on that page, page here.
Okay. Um, so you want to know about contracted services, it's like compensation. Why, yeah?
I was just going to some big chat of.
But, um, I didn't want to say that, but a lot of that has to be funded through the grants, and what is happening at this point is the grants being used to fund individuals, and so that has clearly become more and more of the, and it's also increased. So contracted services, they come this, at their needs, which are service providers that are, are occupational therapists and office therapists, so they're trying to start a bank. Any other consulting services, when you have, um, the, the, and hiring, getting contracted cardiologists at the club to accommodate sure that health insurance is working so good. The, the big pocket of, of money is really targeting our services that students have in the home setting through PACES. And, um, a few years back, um, there was some inconsistencies in terms of what, um, pocket this is, can I say?
Before you.
Um, so PACES services sometimes got, um, put under tuition instead of contracted services, which is where they needed to be. So we made that adjustment last year, for last year's budget, so that's why you see a sizable increase in that particular line. Um, it's not that we've increased our costs so much that we're just now building the right locations. Yeah. Does that make sense? Other things, contracted services, when, um, when I have a request to do an independent evaluation, or, um, we have, uh, southern language interpreters that can visit Karen at conferences, all of that comes out of contracted services. It would have students that, um, are out for an extended period of time and medical reasons, and they require tutoring, tutoring also comes out of the.
Thank you.
I had a question about guidance psychology testing materials.
Oh, me too.
I don't understand the big jump from sixteen seventeen seventeen eighteen, it's still not being used.
Yeah.
Uh, nine, well, it's called special guidance slash psych services. So the testing materials are at three thousand, which is, which is what it is this year.
And the way, um, our, our school psychologist, he, he, when he orders protocols and testing materials, he kind of does it in cycles that he has to replenish. So I think they buy kind of, but I think, the way I understand it, is that he buys them in bulk, and it lasts X amount a year, so I think he just had to buy a whole new slope, testing protocols and materials.
So if he spent nine seventeen sixty seventeen, and then we're forecasting three thousand this year, he's saying he's got another round of eighty thousand that we have to buy more?
I think we can go back and clarify this, but, but one of the things to keep in mind too is that, much like our textbooks, standardized tests are. But one of the things to keep in mind too is that, much like our textbooks, standardized tests are, um, can only be used for a period of time. And then they're re-normed. So when you have to buy a new test kit, it's well over a thousand dollars, just for the one kit. And then all the protocols that you'll need. So this line item looks at all of the testing materials, not just the school psychologist. So it looks at the active achievement testing and speech testing. So any of those tests, and I've asked the psychologist to have forward thinking on this, to look ahead. So you know that a test is getting re-normed now. We have one year from the publication date to replacing the updated test. So, um, off the top of my head, I'm not sure if there's a particular...
Yep.
Yeah, certainly.
I don't know. Those numbers are not my number. Just wondering that. Yeah, it's hard. Yeah, and the last page is not the special one, we can't do anything about it. So if anybody has any other questions specifically, um, that they can come right now, chime in. If not, of course, email. Um, definitely go to any of us. We can forward it on to the board of your parties, whether it be Marie, or Steve, or whomever. We can get, or Matt, if you guys have something to solve, we can have a more thorough discussion. Kim, do you have anything else?
Yeah, we just, Sandy also serves on the capital planning with me. And, um, we have two other members, well, from the finance committee. And we have Mike Zara, who's a citizen of March. So we typically meet with representatives from the school committee. I don't know, who is your representative from capital planning or capital planning?
It was Casey. I don't, I was a little...
So we just had some question you had submitted. What was it?
Oh, it's me, hi.
So you submitted, have you looked at your capital plan submission? It's a pretty substantial.
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah. So I, I'm assuming that you want Steve to be part of the discussion? Or to explain the request for the, um, the server and all those other things?
Backer.
The sidewalk, if, and all that stuff. Did Woods pull on, I don't have the... So we wanted to invite him. I didn't know he was gonna be here tonight. But somebody's gonna have to meet with capital planning to sort of go over the proposal. Because, I said, somebody's gonna have to meet with capital planning to go over the specifics of the proposal.
Okay.
So I, Steve isn't here, I don't know.
Right. So do you, are there capital planning meetings you would like to...
Yeah, so I'll give you a couple of days.
Okay.
So we're meeting next Tuesday. I mean, we're meeting tomorrow, which I probably is gonna be, we have Highway coming in tomorrow. So could he come in and you on, um, see our next meeting? Sandy wins someone after tomorrow. Is it, are we back on another Tuesday? Oh, yeah, we're back on another Tuesday because of, um, I just left this meeting. Hang on, sorry.
No, that's...
Because we have all these department heads coming in doing, oh, here. Can you check to see if maybe he could come in tomorrow? That would be better because we're kind of, we're meeting with Steve. Because right now, we're trying to take all of the requests and then we're prioritizing them. And so we, we understand that this is a priority, that if you're having computers and you don't have...
Would this, would this be the more information I send to Charlie?
Yes. So we have parties, but we, it's important for him to meet with us.
And what's, yeah, what?
Um, we're, um, we're gonna say, um, we start at six thirty, so if you come in at seven?
Yeah, seven o'clock.
Is that six? We start at six, but we have, um, Highway coming in at six. So maybe come at six thirty.
Six thirty would be good.
I thought we had made another date after this week, but I don't have it on my calendar or else I would put that date out. I usually have it there, but I don't.
I'll check.
Yeah, and if that doesn't work, just email me a date that would work for him. We usually meet on Monday nights or Tuesday nights, so.
Okay. I should be able to.
Thank you.
I have a related slash unrelated question, I haven't seen anyone. I know when we were looking at MCAS last year, came, when we were doing the Chromebooks, there was some internet proficiency test he did to make sure that we were capable of doing that. With the number of students up and coming that are above the grade levels that are leaving, talking about internet connection speeds, it might be worth having a discussion on how much capacity we have left before we're gonna be critical mass of not have enough internet to do it online again. Because I certainly don't want to get into a situation where students get used to doing it online and then because we don't have the infrastructure to support it, now we have to go back to paper. So that might be something to consider in talks as well. Well, I, no, I know, that's my reaction too. So, so we tweaked by ninety percent last year, but we're gonna be asking the same infrastructure to take another twelve percent of student traffic. And we gotta do something.
Would it be like rescheduling if there's too many taking at once, too, is that possible? Because I, I don't know if we're gonna be making that much money pretty soon.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, I think that was one big piece where Steve was proposing. No, I know, that was, that was part of his little, um, meditation for us. But I just, I completely appreciate you prioritizing things. The priority from the capital planning's point of view may not be the same priority level.
No, 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 I, I don't, I don't agree with that statement. I mean, we, we understand how important it is. So we fund capital projects a little differently. It's not within the levy. A capital project is funded through, um, a couple of means, which is the leftover money that budgets aren't being used, gets rolled over. We call that free cash. And it's also funded through the, um, additional sales tax percentage that we had asked Tom, meaning to approve a few years ago. That's another course of revenue that we dedicate strictly for capital because budgets are so tight over the last few years that our free cash number was going low. And, um, so this year, like, we totally recognize this is your priority and, you know, I'm not saying that we're not gonna do it, or we are gonna do it, but it's gonna be a high priority, we understand that. But just so you are aware, that, um, the Highway Department this particular year has a number of equipment that needs to be addressed that haven't been. So that's been sort of at the top of our list.
I just, I just want to make sure the weight of it is portrayed so it's not to be construed that we are, we're a public, we're capital.
No, 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 no. And I said that, I recognize with the computers, you're gonna need that. But, you know, I, I don't want to sit here and say, yeah, it's all set. But we understand. It'll be a shock if we don't.
I just want it all up there. I'm good.
I don't have anything else right now. Anyone else?
We'll talk about it again at the March meeting.
I said, one, eight.
Oh, a second March meeting, yeah.
March, you?
No, she said March eighth.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
Well, let's start with your schedule, Joy. Mondays are really not good. I have to be on Mondays. Tuesdays aren't paid up. When the end of the month, we best...
Yeah, I think, you know, if you give us some time to sort of, like, get the wrinkles out. But we want a lot of time that if there's some wrinkles that aren't able to get out, that you're gonna find a way.
Would the third week of the month be out of question?
Oh, March? I mean, yeah, that's fine. I think that's...
What is the, what is the forty-five days before town meeting?
We have to vote a budget forty-five days before town meeting. So what's the date of the...
What is that, eight?
What, yeah, I was gonna ask.
May fourteenth, is it?
Uh, yeah, May, um, town meeting is on May fourteenth.
Oh, I have that right.
Yeah, that's very nice.
Say, just over seventy.
Thirty, so the end of eight has to be done by beginning of April. And March.
Actually, that doesn't have much time at all.
Yeah.
It's like the twenty-eighth is forty-five days.
Yeah.
But maybe we have some more news for you by your March.
Well, the March meeting is the fifth.
Yeah, fifth.
So maybe on March fifth, we'll be able to kind of have an idea of where we stand a little closer. So maybe that third week would be enough. Plus, we'll be in touch.
Sure.
I mean, if you have to do, yeah. So I, you should probably do the third week.
So what about the twenty, the twentieth, the twenty-first, day two hundred and five, jumping to that. What about you, Linda?
We, we have a March, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Uh, it's Wednesday, so I was better.
Okay. Is everybody up here for the twenty-first, Wednesday?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Is there a time that works better for you?
No, I go to gymnastics from five to eight, so.
Oh.
Wednesday, but I can figure it out.
Okay. Um, maybe not too late? Um, I'm okay whenever. Alex, when?
This is far enough in advance, I'll make it in the work.
Okay, yeah, so I don't, I don't teach, I just have to get around to my students.
Five.
Five.
Starts at five.
Is that okay? Are there, for everyone else? Yeah?
Yeah.
We're gonna, you came.
So five, on Wednesday, March twenty-first?
Yeah, there wasn't a choice in that way, by the way. No, I don't think they'll need to be, I don't think they really need to be, right, she has another.
Probably not. I mean, if we have any pressing special education issues, I think we should press them.
What do you, I was gonna say, would it possibly get that, be a breakdown by the fifth?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And that's called a special meeting. Basically, just an extra budget meeting.
All right. So while we're talking about, um, meetings, should we talk about this?
Sure.
Situation?
Situation, okay.
So we, we have discussed changing our meeting schedule instead of it being once a month or every four weeks changing it to every six or seven weeks. So Bob was kind enough to print up a, a potential schedule and we thought we would have, um, hopefully a brief conversation about how we are about to change our meeting schedules to make it, you know, we don't, whatever. But, oh, but, oh, you took away the, so all this.
Yeah, it gets kind of complicated.
And they all Mondays?
Yeah, they're all, they're all Mondays, but, well, here's the problem. You can't just count six or seven weeks ahead without looking at the whole calendar year. Uh, for example, the seven-week schedule gives seven meetings per year. And they are, and it always starts the first Monday in July. July second, no August meeting, which is typical. September fourth, October twenty-second. And then there would be no November meeting. December tenth, January twenty-eighth, no February meeting. March eighteenth, no April meeting. May sixth, and then no June meeting because the July meeting is only one extra week till July first. Now, that leaves it a little later in budget time. So here's a look at the six-week schedule, which gives eight meetings. July second, no August, September fourth, October fifteenth, November twenty-sixth, no December meeting. January seventh, February eighteenth, no March meeting, April first, May thirteenth. And no June meeting because it would be, again, one week before the July first meeting. So it's, that's over.
Meeting to close out the, with July, or little July, little July.
Now, as we just did, we can always call an extra meeting when necessary. This is just...
Well, my thought is we hardly ever need July, but we probably need a March.
No, we need July to close out.
We need to close out.
Do we have to meet for that though, or is that something we could come to Christine's office and...
Uh, you need to come to sign the warrants, but it's just to close out to let you know when we're going to be here, when we're returning to the town, if there are transfers that had to be done.
We could always get down there to sign warrants whenever you need it.
Right, but I think to Christine's point though, like, um, it should be public information how we close out the year, when we're returning.
Well, there's always a July meeting because it starts on the first Monday, July.
It's not flexible with it because we're not ready on July first to close out. We're usually, either the end of that, we, we'll be at the...
Well, we have a different work opportunity.
Well, in the next fiscal year will be July second, that will be the meeting.
So we wouldn't be done by then though. We wouldn't be able to close that. So what, this is, this is sort of what we're thinking, is exactly what you've done. But my, our problem is we also have to work around three other, um, school committee meetings. So would you mind if I took this back and we started playing with how all of them would be together?
Not at all. This is just a proposal.
Yeah, this would be great because I think, I have personally, I feel like we definitely could cut down on budget season.
But it probably, it probably will have to be done from scratch each year.
So is this the system we discussed briefly last month where some, someone, not someone, someone would be appointing a signer for a long few months?
Yep. And it, it was based on a concept that was shared in Old Rochester, I think there might be a sample in there. Um, and Bob did a great job of trying to work around it. Um, you know, it, it was something that had been shared with me and, you know, it certainly is worth a thought. I haven't had an opportunity yet, to be honest with you, I haven't really focused on budgets, um, to figure out how to have some consistency within all the districts, you know, without them being impacted. I haven't...
Well, we have four more meetings before we have to vote for a change.
Absolutely. Yep, so I think we can start, you know, hopefully when we, when we get the budgets a little bit firmer, more firm up. But this is a, this is a great start, Bob. Thank you.
Alex, to what you were asking, the school committee would appoint one member of the committee to be able to sign the warrants. So we would, we would still need to maintain...
Of course.
One of the, making the schedule for our members. So the school committee would appoint one member, and then at the next meeting, we just, probably we're just letting you know what that member did sign out here.
And we, we already do that minute. Um, we have a member who is the chair, who goes to sign the warrants and, you know, if there's something that happens, we, we, that's...
How happen the schedules that are working on the towns and groups?
They say they love it. Um, you know, the chair of the committee works for, one of the chairs, one of the four committees in Old Rochester, she works for us. And she said that, you know, they all love it. So they tested it, it worked from January to June, and then they adopted it.
They have similar size?
Yeah. Yeah, same number of school committees.
Twice a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they have like a billion schools.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I think it's pretty common. Yeah.
We could have a special committee that meets in April, May, I'm sure.
Towards that, yeah.
In the whole district to work it out.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so do you have anything to add on the building projects aside from...
I know Kim did, um, as I, you know, as I said, basically, we've been meeting on a pretty regular basis. The bids came in low during the window sightings indoors, everybody's thrilled. Um, but the bids for the fire suppression system have the potential, we don't have bids in yet, but have the potential to be a little higher than is expected. But, you know, the, the town is, will work with everyone to see, you know, the best funding sources and what needs to happen. But, um, you know, the money's been voted, we, um, the window sightings indoors, bids look great. Um, and the, uh, project manager vetted the bids, the people submitted the bids. So, um, I think we're, we're getting there. We're getting there. The scary part for us, I think, is just what it's going to need to open. You know, we can't really be in the school all summer. So that's, it's going to be, um, a challenge. And we really haven't figured out how we're gonna be able to do that.
Are they gonna work double shifts if necessary to get out of here for a certain...
I think, you know, they're, they will do what's needed to be done. You know, there's a substantial completion date, but it isn't... I mean, that is critically important, but it's also just getting the building ready. Because for us to be able to have the fire suppression system, I mean, we're gonna have to, you know, cover the tarp, a tremendous amount of things. Because, you know, when these ceiling tiles come down, um, I would think that it's going to be a bit of a mess.
That's gonna be the most, the hardest part of the project.
Yes.
That's the most unforeseen, it's gonna be high. And even you can see it during Tommy's scramble at the last minute. Fire, I mean, hey, say it, that's got the most potential. I mean, hey, say, that's got the most potential to be way out of line.
Yep.
And that's not something that can be done after hours? Nope, no, there should be, I mean, I understand substantial completion, I would think there should also be a completion clause in there.
Yes.
I'm probably going to get it, we need so much time to do the work, but...
Yeah. Yeah, we, I, I feel really blessed, I mean, you know, the town's been fantastic. Charlie's really stayed right on top of it. We have a great project manager and the architects. I mean, you know, they've been with us, they did the roof, so we know them, they know us.
Which is great. The problem is the perception from the town, you know, I don't speak for everybody, okay, we're a red rush here, but the perception of the town was, oh, the roof was supposed to be done by the end of the year. Nobody wants to hear that, you know, nobody wants to hear that there was something else. And now they're saying, great, now we're, now we're coming up to a project that isn't something that guys poor had names on the roof, and now we can't turn around. So the perception of the town is going to be different on this aspect of it. If it were to get to that point, which obviously, nobody wants it to get there.
Right. And that's, you know, like, it is, it's a problem, so as long as we all can control the weather, we know we're snow days, um, you know, obviously, I'm doing really well with that, so...
We know those five, yeah.
Oh, yeah, me too. I did us this too, though. Yeah, I know. I don't sound good in the morning, sorry. Okay. So, um, I'm really glad we started this meeting an hour early, because you're at ten-thirty at night right now.
I do have a request, though, would you be changing to six o'clock for the rest of the...
Well, I was just going to quote that idea, but if that's not something that you can do, then...
Um, I could just handle it around fifteen, I guess you saw I came late, because I could get somewhere in our part of my last class, but maybe six, five, six-ten, zero is...
Okay. That's still weird, you know? We could postpone meeting right whenever we want.
We could do six-thirty.
If you're late, like, you did.
I mean, at the, at the very beginning of the meeting, we just, you know, warrants, talk about whatever. I mean, it's not like there's anything crucial in the first fifteen minutes that you could potentially miss. If there is, certainly, um, we could move agenda items around, so you're not, you know what I mean? So if you're okay with that, and everyone else is okay with starting our next meeting at six o'clock, I think it would be well received.
I, to your point, I mean, we would, it'd be twenty eleven.
Yeah.
And with...
Yeah, but it's budget, so, I know, so...
Sure, just as long as you know that it's going to be a little late.
That's okay, as long as it's not a huge inconvenience. Is everyone else okay with the six o'clock start?
Sure.
Come on? Okay. Fantastic. So let's do that. So, case to remember, um, our next meeting day is March fifth, Monday, six P M. Uh, February eighth is the meeting thirty-one and seven, like, nine meeting. At six, seven, what time is that?
Five.
Five, okay, that's right. Uh, February sixteenth is an in-service day for teachers, and no school, no students. It's the Friday before vacation. Vacation is the nineteenth through the twenty-third. And motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Done.